Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Half Moon Bay Planning Commission, and Happy New Year. Let's go ahead. We're going to open up the meeting, and we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
And roll call?
Commissioner Benjamin.
Here.
Commissioner Ruddick.
Here.
Commissioner Polgar.
Here.
Vice Chair Hernandez.
I am present.
I'm sorry, Vice Chair, I just, I'm just...
It's all right, we can have two.
Muscle memory.
Yeah, it is, I think so. Chairhold.
Here.
Everyone's present tonight.
Our next item is the Approval Amendments of December 10th, 2019.
I move to approve.
One second.
One second.
One in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Oh, you have to, Rick, okay, Rick abstains, you were absten-- okay. Okay, moving on to our next item, election of Chair and Vice Chair. Do we have any nominations or volunteers for Chair or Vice Chair?
Commissioner Ruddick, are you interested in being the Vice Chair?
Yes, thank you.
I nominate Commissioner Ruddick.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Chair?
Nominate Vice Chair Benjamin as Chair.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Hand over the gavel to you.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure, it's been enjoyed being the Chair, and happy to not be the Chair. I know that feeling, nice work, Brian.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Public Comment. This is the time in our meeting when, actually, there should be oral communications at this point in our agenda. So, with the, unless there's objection from... Yeah, okay, very good. So, this is the time in our meeting when anyone who would like to comment to the Planning Commission on any item which is not on our agenda should feel free to do so, to approach the dais, and we have one such item. So, I'm going to open the oral communications and invite Paul Grigoriev to speak. Welcome, Mr. Grigoriev.
Welcome.
Thank you very--
Welcome back.
Welcome to you, thanks very much, and congratulations on your new office. Good evening, Chairman Benjamin, line through that, and Commissioners, my name is Paul Grigoriev, and I'd like to update you on a matter that my wife and I believe needs your attention, the remediation of the unpermitted development activity that has taken place at 392 Greenbrier Road. We last discussed this matter with you at your October 22nd meeting, when you approved a recommendation for a post hoc coastal development permit for the 392 property. I believe each of you has now received a memo from us with our suggestions for the CDP. We forwarded this to you on November 26th, but apparently it wasn't relayed to you by staff until almost a month later. To update you, since the October 22nd meeting, staff have granted permission to the 392 property owners to erect a fence that would violate the city's municipal code regarding fencing. It also appears that the fence, which had originally been deemed by staff to be part of the CDP process, was taken out of that process, and permission for it was granted separately. Furthermore, as a justification for approving the fence, staff stated that the municipal code does not apply within PUDs, such as Ocean Colony. We found this statement to be very surprising. Finally, we have heard that staff are reconsidering the entire concept of remediating the unpermitted development at 392 Greenbrier through a CDP, and might just drop the enforcement action altogether. In sum, having worked very hard for over two years in constant contact with city staff, in the hope of getting the violations at 392 remediated, these new developments are quite a surprise and a shock to us. We would very much appreciate your giving this matter careful attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't see any other green sheets that are marked for the oral communications, everything else seems to have an agenda marking. If there's anyone else who wanted to speak on another item not on the agenda, seeing none, I'll close that, and we'll move on to our scheduled public hearings, the first of which concerns, let's see, we have, I'm going to just take a moment and ask the public whether they, or the Planning Commission, whether you're comfortable with the order. Is this the right order in which you'd like to consider these items? All right, very good. So, we'll start with Item 1A, Amendments to the Happy Moon Bay Municipal Code, and this item will be presented by Jill.
Good evening, Chairman Benjamin, and Planning Commission, and community members. We're happy to see so many folks come out tonight for this, this item. We also just note as staff that we intentionally grouped this item with the next item because we believe that both of them are of interest to the same group of business and property owners in our downtown, so this is a really important night for downtown. This first one, before Commission tonight, is the Mixed Use Districts and Parking Standards Ordinance. The Commission continued the item on December 10th, 2019, to a date certain, which is today, to provide time for additional research and outreach. This ordinance covers all four of the city's commercial mixed-use zoning districts. Staff presented the full scope of proposed changes at the last meeting, and will focus tonight on recommended changes that came from the additional research and outreach. We are happy to revisit the other material if we are requested to do so, but we aren't, aren't going to cover it straight away because there's quite a bit to, to take on here. So, this work comes from policy development through the multi-year land use plan update process, and more specific study of zoning codes that the Planning Commission has been engaged in. An urgency ordinance was implemented related to one part of this zoning amendment, and the uses associated with that ordinance, ground floor Main Street between Pillar Cidos Creek and Correa Street, seem to be the primary area, the topic of residents, downtown property owners, downtown businesses, and local real estate professionals that we've, we've heard from. We hope that, in that we haven't heard a lot about any of the rest of the code amendment, which there's, there's a number of things in it, that folks are pretty comfortable with, with the other portions of it, and we can, again, cover those if need be. Remembering that the Commission has studied a lot of zoning policy options over the past couple of years, this is one suite of several focusing downtown. We're going to see you some more soon with neighborhood preservation measures, and you've already worked on the accessory dwelling unit ordinance for a second time. So, let's focus right in on Heritage Main Street. At your December meeting and since, staff has her community request to provide more flexibility in the draft ordinance. We've been researching options based on this input, as well as our own experience, and have brought several forward to you. We'd like to start with frontage depth. The question specifically asked was, does the whole building need to be an active ground floor dependent use? And that's really the gist of this proposed code amendment, is to ensure that Main Street in these four blocks keeps a really active pedestrian-oriented environment, and this is, this was a reaction to a lot of concern that staff has heard, people coming in right off the street, residents and business owners, who, who were really worried about recent conversions that they had seen for different spaces. And so, that, that is what, what's before you. This frontage depth idea is one that we actually considered bringing forward in the initial code amendment that you saw in December, but knowing that town center planning was coming soon, and we'll talk about that at the end of this presentation, we crafted this ordinance to be fairly simple. But this is, this is a fairly standard type of provision, and it's similar to what you'll see with liner uses and large format development, as well as a number of codes for downtowns that have requirements for frontage depth. So, this would probably, most likely affect larger sites, such as those with courtyard configurations, corner properties where you have a second side of the building that can take access, or where a building might be especially wide or a little bit deeper, and so it can take point of access from Main Street and lead through a corridor to a back space. This aerial, of course, is the Zebala Plaza area. The blue is showing 50 feet approximately of depth, which is staff's proposal. We also heard from some real estate folks that they wish there could be consideration for even less depth for this requirement of active ground floor. So, we drafted that for you to go down as low as 20 feet, and that's approximately what that kind of yellow-green color is showing. For this particular example, we would not be comfortable going down to 20 because you're, you're going to lose the frontage off of what we would hope could be a more activated plaza someday. But the 50 feet would work, so we're comfortable with that. We crafted the 20 feet as well, though, to be discretionary as a use permit for you to, to think about. In the research that I've done on this, just, just a few points of note, Semateo, City of Semateo has a 60-foot requirement. I know Redwood Cities is down to 20. A lot of research shows that there's even some liner uses that get as, as skinny as eight feet. That is not a very flexible space. 20 is really pretty consistently considered to be as, as low as you might want to go. A couple more examples, so Cunha's was a question that somebody asked about recently, and so 50 feet back is where that second tree is. And it... Ow, thank you. Don't, don't look at the shadow, it's, it's here. And so, that gives you a sense of, you could have a door, a, a new entrance farther back off of Main Street, and still have a front use if, if that particular building were reconfigured someday in the future. But note, this is not out of what, out of character with what has been developed on Main Street. So, for example, this building where Goldworks is located, that depth is on the order of 30 or so feet, and it's fronting the tuck-under parking. So, it, it's working, it's holding the corner. I personally wish it was a little bit deeper, but it works really well for them, and anyone who's been inside their shop knows that it, the space is excellent for display, and their storefront windows are, are pretty terrific. So, it gives you one idea for how to be more flexible with this code. Staff is recommending that you, you consider this one, and, and it's fully coded out for you. Next, folks brought up the old houses. You have four old houses in these four blocks of Main Street. Two are down by feed and fuel, and two are on the 500 block. They're kind of cool because they're in couplets, and they're in excellent condition, and we would recommend simply exempting them. They're unlike anything else on Main Street. Every other building on Main Street has a storefront window, a shop front. These were developed to be houses, they've been converted. It's easier to convert homes to offices, it's harder to have retail or restaurants and other kinds of uses like that working out of a house, although you do have that going on in the 700 block with, with a couple restaurants. So, it can work, but we, we just don't think it's worth it for these four. The, three of them are actually in your local listing for heritage structures. In staff's opinion, you're lucky to have them still. They, they tell a nice part of the story of Half Moon Bay's history, and the yard space gives a little particular character that's different than a lot of other downtowns. Okay, this, this one is not, probably going to have a big impact, but we want to suggest it just because we'd hate to miss an opportunity. The idea of custom industry, custom industry is already allowed in the commercial downtown district, but it's really limited, and it has an emphasis on hand tools, and the two examples are jewelry and candle making. We think this could be a much bigger wow if you, if you happen to have somebody come in who, who could do this, and we'd hate to have to turn them away because they're using a 3D printer or some other form of custom trades work, artisan work, et cetera. So, this is opening the door for that. I would expect your town center planning effort where you're going to have some more consulting support, might be able to advise us better about how to attract that kind of industry if you're interested in that. There are a number of, of thriving areas in different, different cities in the West Coast where I've really seen it cluster well, but not as much in the Bay Area because our, our real estate is so expensive. So, it's, it's hard, but Half Moon Bay might be a good fit for it. And then the, the last one, you, you heard public comment in December from a, a commercial property owner who, who totaled a really good background about what it took to get a tenant in, in a particular space. And he specifically asked for you to think about having more flexibility in the event that there was a long vacancy, or to allow a temporary use. So, clearly vacancies aren't going to help the vibrancy of downtown either, so we, that is, we don't want to have unintended consequences with this ordinance. We, we fully understand that and appreciate that. So, in this case, there are three different options that are put into your code for your, you to consider that could be taken individually, or you could combine them in different ways. We wrote them all together so that you could see how that would work, but long vacancy was defined as six months, and the reason why is that it, if it goes to a year, then it could take another three months to find a tenant, and maybe they need a tenant improvement, and maybe we'd have to process it, and you could, could really extend it. So, we're recommending six months if you want to consider that option. For temporary uses, we, we don't think it would benefit a property owner or a business if it was anything shorter than a year with a one-year extension. Leases are usually longer than that, but I think we'll probably get some input from our, our downtown folks tonight who may provide additional guidance about that, and that will be helpful. And then, the notion of walk-in clientele, this is something that didn't come up in your meeting, but staff is aware of this through other cities that have this requirement. It's, San Carlos actually has a specific definition for walk-in clientele that we, we took a peek at for this. A real estate professional met with me and talked to me about it as well, and so you'll see that we've drafted a definition for walk-in clientele, remembering that the intent of this, this zoning code, there's actually an upfront statement in it about serving residents on a daily basis. And so, if you think about some of the, the newer uses that have come in, whether or not they're doing that, maybe the walk-in clientele criteria would have been helpful to, to think about frequency and, and how that would work. So, those are the flexibility components that we wanted you to consider. We got a few more things we want to cover. There's been some dialogue about, why, why is this focused on visitor-serving? What's with all this visitor-serving language? Well, this code doesn't really add any new language about visitor-serving. It's meant to be serving the local interests. That said, we did acknowledge visitor-serving in the definition of active ground floor dependent use, so that it would tie to the existing code in the commercial downtown district. You'll notice that that language is already throughout the commercial downtown code, and that's because of the Coastal Act, and the city's obligation under that has affected how the downtown code was initially written, and so a lot of that language is just an artifact of that. So, we want to talk about that a little bit more. This, this amendment was drafted to broaden that view. The Mixed Use Districts and Parking Standards Ordinance specifically supports a broad spectrum of community needs. Consistent with the vision, the proposed amendments emphasize that downtown is not limited to a collection of commercial uses to serve visitors. More than that is a mixed-use Half Moon Bay neighborhood. It's, it's really pushing it in a much more vibrant, local-oriented direction. The intent is that the city would continue to allow numerous types of residential uses, as well as businesses providing good services and employment opportunities. Medical and professional offices, repair and service businesses, as well as retail, lodging, and restaurants are all considered to be part of the mix. Along with the proposed amendments to the parking standards, the development prospects are significantly more favorable and flexible than in the current code. We also want to be really clear that the proposed active ground floor dependent use requirement is not a retail restriction code. It's not all about retail. In particular, a wide variety of uses are allowed in the personal improvement services and personal service classifications. Not all of those would be found ground floor dependent, but many of them are. So, the, understanding, appreciating that the characteristics of retail have changed significantly, especially over the past two decades, we, we understand it's expensive to maintain a retail storefront, and many consumers no longer shop in person. So, guidance for downtown planning through all kinds of sources that we've looked at, encourage this concept of retail plus, or an expanded array of uses that are still pedestrian-oriented and part of the, the vibrancy of a downtown streetscape, where doors are open, and you don't need an appointment to go in, and there's a lot of ins and outs, and people parking once and able to walk and get business done in more than one place. So, the idea is that it be active, walkable, fun, and useful for residents on a day-to-day And I, I hope that's helpful because the, the visitor-serving language seems to have concerned a, a number of people, and that was definitely not the heart and soul of this, this proposed amendment. One more topic that was very important, a number of people have said, "Oh, we just really need to master plan downtown." They're right, they're absolutely right. And so, although master planning has not specifically begun, some components that would typically come up through a master planning process are already being thought about and are coordinated through your Planning Commission, through city council, and through your staff. So, typically, master planning would address land use, public spaces, infrastructure, including circulation and parking, design standards, catalyst projects, and some of those recent and, and current things are, are highlighted in the slides. The items in green are improvements that have happened throughout your downtown over the last few years, and, and black are things that we think really need to be addressed. The city doesn't have a Siwak Cafe ordinance, that would be a good thing to do. Infrastructure, circulation, and parking, we, we know we're going to hear a lot about parking tonight, which is why we've been working on parking occupancy surveys and really making sure we understand it well. The Planning Commission has reviewed that survey a, a couple times now. The city also extended a lease agreement that we have for the Mill Street parking lot for another five years because we, we understand that people are concerned about downtown parking. And, whoops. Other things that you'll see coming forward in a town center plan would really focus on community character. The number one thing that we've been working on so far is that council re-established an architectural advisory committee, which has been incredibly helpful to staff already. They've only met three times, and it's been great, and I, I know there's at least one committee member here. And you'll see more historic preservation form-based codes and catalyst sites. I'm not sure if everybody in the room knows that we have a, the city has a preliminary application for the former gas station site at, on Main Street at Kelly, and in fact, that, that plan was already brought to the Architectural Advisory Committee. Its concept is a mixed-use building of residential units in two floors above commercial business types of uses, and... types of uses, and for a total of a three-story building with shared parking. That project location is so important that we would consider that to be a catalyst project. A couple notes and tweaks in the code since you saw it in December, and things that we've noticed because of some comments. There's a definition for EV charging station that was added to the code. If there's any concern about specifically what type of station that is, we could make a, we could add a reference to being, at least meeting the minimum standard of state building code, which is a Level 2 station. Although, being too specific might not be in your best interest because the technology keeps improving. So, you can think about that. Duplex and triplex parking, this is a bit of minutia, but it's really important, and it relates to the ADU ordinance. Staff had proposed clarifying in this code amendment, because it covers so much parking, that guest parking is not required for duplexes and triplexes, which is consistent with most of the code citations that you have around that item right now, and in other places it's just silent. We were wanting to clarify that. But now with the new state law and the ADU ordinance that you just saw, we've been testing that draft ADU ordinance with all kinds of projects. And where are we thinking this? We actually think we should maintain, in fact, require some guest parking with new duplexes and triplexes. There's really nothing that can be done with all the existing development in those categories, but if we were to require one guest parking place for duplexes and triplexes, and they came in and converted garage spaces in the future, at least you would still have a little bit of onsite parking. That state law is really pretty assertive about allowing conversions, so it was an interesting crosscut between that ordinance that you just saw and this one here. We do notice in our, this draft that we put forward tonight, that the walk-in clientele standard seems to bump into the active-ground-floor-dependent-use standard. They are compatible with each other, but we might not have coded it consistently with every single use. We will listen to, obviously, the public hearing with you, and then your discussion, and make sure that if you're going to want to use that requirement, that we'll clean that up in the direction that you want it to go in. This is a pretty minor thing, but it's just, we're trying to get it really, really well-done. And then, the last one is to require a one-year and a second-year check-in with City Council. That would be happening while the Town Center Plan is working, and it'll take a while to finish a Town Center Plan. So, we want to make sure that we're monitoring this on a regular basis and not increasing vacancies. And so, we will have an inventory, and we can track that. So, next steps, of course, we're looking forward to hearing your direction tonight. If you make a recommendation, anything that you recommend will go to the City Council for public hearing. They have a two-reading process. And then, this would require Coastal Commission certification before it's on the books. Once certified by the Coastal Commission, if it is, then the urgency ordinance would be set aside. It would be gone, and it would be replaced with this permanent code, which is frankly a lot more flexible than the urgency ordinance. So, our format with Planning Commission meetings is to make sure that the Commission has an opportunity to ask clarifying questions, not specifically to comment on proposals, and then allow time for public hearing, and then deliberation. And staff is here to answer questions. And of course, we also have the recommendation, including reminders in the event that you wish to give us some direction about those items at the end there. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for the staff report. Colleagues, do you have any clarifying questions that you'd like to ask? Rick, through the chair. Couple of these. Very simple question. What's an example of visitor-serving that's not retail, other than a visitor information
Restaurant, and in particular. And then, lodging, of course, is visitor-serving, but it, we wouldn't want it to be consuming the ground floor. You have lodging on Main Street with entrances to upper floors.
If we maintain the current 50-foot setback, the 50-foot setback that was recommended, or actually is a whole floor, 50-foot is what's being recommended, people can still come forward with requests for variances to the Planning Commission, correct?
They could. We would, we were trying to structure this so that there was an actual hard limit of 20 feet. And if you're uncomfortable with that, then of course, we'll take your direction, and we can address that. But the intent was to maintain at least 20 feet through discretionary review of the Planning Commission for having active ground-floor frontage.
With the conditions you called out, the active use? Those are all the questions I have. Thank you. Brian?
Jill, I seem to recall at our last meeting, you had tossed out a percentage or some sort of a number for that area of Main Street that has been taken over by, say, office space or something else that's sort of non-retail or non-visitor. Do you recall that?
I do, and I have the slide, but I want to be clear. It isn't just, that was counting all of these spaces that might act even as a void, like a parking lot. So, it counted inactive ground-floor uses, mostly offices, parking areas, driving, drive-through areas, and vacant buildings as well, and vacant sites, and it was over 40%.
And so, and I know that with the 50-foot setback for some of those situations like the Zabala Courtyard, or La Piazza, or some of those other areas, the 50-foot would, those areas, say, in the back of La Piazza could still be used as, say, office space or some of those other things if they're outside of that 50-foot setback, correct?
They would, and we'd be happy to talk to you about that a little bit more because we think that could actually be helpful.
Right. And then, so as we're looking for, looking at other buildings that are either vacant or potentially vacant, that are maybe too large to support a retail use or a restaurant use, you know, they could still convert over to some other use as long as they're maintaining either that 50-foot front. So, it gives some flexibility in terms of how a landowner could repurpose some of those buildings.
A lot of flexibility, yes.
So, those are, those are some of the questions that had come up to me at the previous meeting. That's all I got for now.
Yes, Steve?
On a related question, Jill, the early slide you showed with the Zabala Plaza map on it, you said, I believe, that this illustrates how the 50-foot setback works and the 20-foot setback would not. But could you explain that a little more thoroughly for me, please?
Sure. And our deputy city attorney reminded me to be more specific in language. We're going to make sure we call that frontage depth. It's not a setback, because a setback is how far back the building would actually start from the property line. In downtown, we really want to have a build-to line so that building frontages are really close to the front property line. So, in this case, let's focus on the blue, which also includes the yellow. So, that's about a 50-by-50-foot space. And with this proposal, those tenant spaces, which don't quite separate right out at that exact line, but they're in that, in that area, they would need to be, if they were re-tenanted, if they turned over, we'd really like to see those be in an active-ground-floor-dependent use. The spaces behind, and noting that a number of those are retail right now, and there's a restaurant in there and others, if they were to convert over time, they would be opened up by this code to other uses that are allowed in the Commercial Downtown District. So, a whole wide array of office uses could go back there. And in fact, that's allowed now. And I do want to note, I forgot to mention this when I was presenting, there are quite a few buildings that were developed. Bridgette, I appreciate all the work she did on this. We did a lot of research, looking at how entitlements were done for this space, La Piazza, another building on Main and Correia's. And they were specifically reviewing buildings that were going to have retail on the ground floor. They were proposed to be retail, all retail on the ground floor. Now, we can't find conditions of approval that said you can't ever convert it later, and because the zoning code is open to other uses in the way that it is, it's, it hadn't ever been managed in that way. So, this code really kind of cleans things up, but I want to be clear, this wasn't a huge step overstep in terms of what the concept was for so many of the entitlements on a number of these buildings that we're talking about right now. So, this is really flexible for a space like this one. The other thing, just of note, that is in this code that we're not talking about tonight because I don't think it caught anybody's eye too much, is we would love to see some programming in that courtyard space. We'd also like to not have to have six parking places right there and a driveway curb cut. We could imagine that space with seasonal food carts, with, you know, a really redesigned space that's really active and friendly, and part of that, that mix of ground-floor indoor-outdoor spaces that are comfortable and safe and feel good to be around. So, I know that was way more than your question, but you asked about this property, and we've thought about it a lot, and we haven't had a chance to talk to the owner about it, but these are, you know, we need the code before we can engage in that conversation.
Well, I'm sorry, but maybe you think this is obvious, but why does the 20-foot lining not work?
On this particular property, I think it's too shallow because it, this property, this site was designed to have active frontage on Main Street and on that courtyard. And if you lose the active frontage on the courtyard, it's going to be a lot harder to get that courtyard to hum in the direction that you might want it to be going. It'll maintain that sense of a void as opposed to something that is open and really available to pedestrians. Does that help? Okay.
Sarah? Okay, maybe just, I wanted to clarify in my own mind, just because of the reference to frontages that you mentioned a moment ago, if we had a parcel, a structure that was on a corner, it has a frontage on Main Street, and it has a frontage on a cross-street, and I just want to be sure the public, yeah, Cuny's is a great example. I want to be sure I understand how this works. The 50-foot, or the, if we were to agree to the 20-foot, that would be with respect to the frontage on Main Street only, as opposed to on both. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I think my other questions should wait, and if there's nobody else who has questions, I'd like to hear the wisdom of the public. So, we'll open the public hearing. Item 1A, and we have three-speaker cards. The first speaker is Bev Ashcroft. Excuse me, Bev, you may need to push the button on the microphone so we can hear you.
I mainly came here to speak about parking. I've been on Main Street for 65 years. We have had parking problems way back, 30 years ago, as I'm parking committees. I think if the cars are tagged properly, that we wouldn't have the problem.
Well, we won't be able to address your comment directly from the DIAS, but we want to hear everything that you have to say tonight.
What was it? It was mainly about the parking. And the society coffee shop wants to put...
It could be that your comment concerns the next item on the agenda, item 1B. So, we'll invite you back, or we'll make a reference to it, whatever you'd like, but thank you. The next speaker for this item is Ed Love.
We're all in agreement that a more flexible, exciting, and profitable downtown would be a good thing. And I think that Jill and her staff has done a great job in putting together these amendment revisions that are the first steps to achieving that. One of the things that it's kind of aimed for is encouraging more people to live downtown in the mixed-use developments. And that will get people down there permanently, and patronize the shops and the restaurants and everything there, and just make downtown flourish like it really could. The parking changes are also good. In the past, we've had projects that weren't feasible and never happened just because of the antiquated parking back in 1993, I think, 27 years ago, that existed, and that's being remedied by these amendments, and making it much more feasible for the projects that can happen downtown. The downtown has the potential to really, really flourish, and when it does, or as it happens, as it works towards that flourishing, there's probably going to have to be parking structures to be considered, just because you run out of land, and you can't put stores and residences on the land if there's cars that have to be there. So, I really encourage the Commission to review and discuss and approve the proposed amendments that are before you. Another subject, completely different from this, if you haven't noticed, there's a sold sign at 515 Kelly, and that's going to be the future headquarters for Eric de Bodie's Abundant Grace. He received the keys on Friday. So, thanks for your quick approval that the Commission did back in November for that project. Thank you.
Thank you. The last green sheet I have for this item, assuming this one, oh, next to last one we have, is Chad Hooker.
I would like to echo some of Ed's comments about how beneficial it is to upgrade the parking code. I don't agree that it was a 1993 code, the one I've been seeing, it says 1964 on it. And that's what I've been up against for 40 years I was in business. Anyway, I think it's great that this code has been upgraded in the ways that it has, although I do have some comments about that. I want to tell you that in terms of these, the schedules for how many square feet for commercial space going from 20... commercial space going from 250 to 300, one and a half parking spaces instead of two for some of the residential uses and so on, I sort of test drove this through a few projects that I'm familiar with, some that already exist and some that are proposed, and these numbers work. This is a significant improvement over the roadblocks that we've faced for years due to the parking ordinance, and still provides enough parking to be very reasonable. So, I think they're good compromises, and I'm pleased with it. There is something that bothers me a lot, I don't know if you can actually put the words of the ordinance up there, but in section 180345, "exceptions to the Development Standards", there's some specific wording that I think needs to be changed. It says, "The proposed exception," I'm not paraphrasing here, but just cutting some of these sentences out, "the proposed exception of the parking provisions will not be detrimental to public welfare injurious to property improvements based upon supporting evidence such as from a parking demand study, or that grant," this is the Plan Commission, "shall grant a parking exception necessary to ensure the economic viability of the project based on supporting evidence such as an economic assessment." I would really like to see some of that wording changed. Parking studies are typically done by an outside contractor. You guys are asked by part of the public or by an applicant to grant a parking exception, then you subsequently are asked by other people in the public to be very careful about how much parking you give away. So, $50,000, and seven months later, you've got a 60-page report and some sort of a PowerPoint presentation that nobody reads, it's completely useless, it's a waste of time and money, but it's a parking study. I think that wording should be taken out. Similarly, I would question who, professional or otherwise, could do an economic study of whether making a building smaller by 200 square feet to provide another parking spot, or 400 square feet to provide two of them so that you're in compliance with the code, who is capable of looking at that business and saying, "Here's an economic study that proves that this will be beneficial, detrimental, whatever." All these are just, these are completely subjective, and yet, they will submit an applicant and the staff and the entire process to just a punishment that nobody needs. We've already had 50 years of that stuff, let's move on. I really hope you pass the parking changes, but I'd like to see those couple of words deleted. Thank you.
Thank you.
This microphone has no range, it's like half an inch, and then you're...
Right. Yeah, we say if you can put your fist next to them, I can put your mouth on the outside. But take your hand away before you start. Thank you. And the last green sheet that I have is from, for this item is from Crystal Lynn. Welcome, Ms. Lynn.
Hello, thank you, Crystal Lynn, the president and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. And I would like to say that we support the amendments and ordinances, and I did want to give a wonderful kudos to Jill for all of her hard work. After the emergency ordinance went into effect, I did have a member on the development side who was a little worried about how that was going to affect his ability to rent out units. And we had a wonderful meeting with Jill, and Jill was able to quell his concerns, and she kept him in the loop about the changes and took his feedback into consideration, and it was greatly received. And as far as I've been told, he's happy with these changes. So, we really do appreciate all the hard work that went into this. As was mentioned before, I think everybody's very excited about a hustle and bustle of downtown Main Street, and so the chamber does support the ordinances in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there's no one else who wants to speak on this item, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. So, colleagues, who would like to just begin the conversation? Brian?
Thank you. I also had some members of the public reach out to me and then follow up and said that they had talked with staff, and most of their concerns were alleviated by these changes. So, thank you, Jill, and I think these clarifications as far as the frontage depth addressed a lot of the concerns, and I think what you've done is built in the flexibility here to where it gives property owners the right flexibility while being able to maintain what we want to maintain as far as the ground floor retail and activity on Main Street. So, I'm supportive of the changes, and I think this is, yeah, all good steps. I appreciate the comments on the parking changes, agree with those as well. I like the flexibility in terms of including the 20-foot depth, but with the use permit requirement, I think that allows us to, gives the planning commission some opportunity to engage in that and look at those special situations where that might be appropriate. But otherwise, I'm supportive of all the changes and the ordinance, and thank you.
I'm going to interrupt just to clarify the distinction between the use permit and the variance question that Commissioner Hernandez raised. I assume that like any other part of the variant, any other part of the code, if there was someone who wanted to go, you know, wanted to get a break from some other part of the code completely unrelated to the use permit allowance for, the proposed use permit allowance for 20 feet, they could always come up and make an argument, make a case that may or may not be well received for a variance. So, I'm distinguishing between variance and...
Yes, you'd have to make the findings for a variance, which are obviously different from these.
Difficult, I might say.
And difficult, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Other comments? Feedback? Rick?
I'm not sure how old the original code is, but I'm...
Older than you.
Very likely, but I'm supportive of the changes. I think having flexibility, but putting some constraints around that flexibility are important. I think I'm good with the 20-foot setback language. I would like to hear city staff's feedback around the comment raised by Mr. Hooker about the questions he raised around the parking study and so forth. I mean, we don't want to put an undue burden on the public, and maybe, again, I'm not an attorney, but I work with many fine people, such as yourself, Ms. King, but maybe we just had some softer language that said "such as" or "could include items as," you know, maybe providing some examples, but I'd be curious to see what we could do to soften that up, or if you think that's appropriate.
I want to just tell you what the thinking was that went into that, and I do appreciate the comment very much. If the proposal didn't include such progressive reductions in parking requirements, if it was trying to keep it in the world that we're in right now, where you're faced with, the commission, you're asked with almost every mixed-use project to consider a parking exception. And right now, the code has a finding about, and you'll see that we struck this, but it's, the applicant has submitted evidence to the planning commission that approval of a parking exception is necessary to ensure the economic viability of the project. Well, we basically brought that forward by explaining it needed to actually be some kind of economic study of that. And so, it really wasn't, it was telling you, explaining to us how to do that in addition to an assessment of what the actual parking demand of the use would be. There's another finding in the code right now that you're asked to make for parking exceptions. The applicant has made every reasonable effort to provide the required number of parking spaces. I, you know, staff has a really hard time writing around that finding, and so, we're trying to make it a lot clearer about the components as to when you might be okay with a parking exception above and beyond the reductions that are proposed in this code. We can look at how else to get at this, but let's, I just want to remember a couple things for the good of the group. Two things are being reduced independently of each other. The requirement for the number of parking spaces for residential development in the commercial downtown district, and I'm going to click ahead, we had a slide at your last meeting that I think is really helpful.
While you're digging for that, maybe a question for Winter. I seem to recall that in the planning code, that is not our zoning ordinance, but in the state law, there is a general requirement for planning that we have to make decisions that are not injurious to the public welfare and so on and so forth. I had understood this to be the kind of thing that gives the city something, you know, I wouldn't want to call it a fig leaf, but evidence that we could use in the event of someone disagreeing with the conclusion that was reached by the city. Am I misunderstanding?
No, I think that would be substantial evidence is the term that comes up to support your decisions and make sure they're not arbitrary, so it would definitely provide substantial evidence to your decision.
Thank you.
Jill, thank you for putting this slide up here. I think this really helps make the case. So, in the case of an eight, or what is this, eight two-bedroom units, you'd have to put up 18 parking spots in the current code, we're proposing 14, and you could get a waiver down to 12, so we're providing more flexibility. If I think about the more than half dozen projects I've seen in the last few years asking for variances around parking, I can't think of any that step outside of what you've got up here. So, I actually would not want to see, given that we're creating more flexibility, I actually would say maybe, maybe we don't want to make the language more flexible. I think, I don't want to have, I mean, we've opened this up a lot, I mean, maybe for a large project, but I mean, the example I can think of, and correct me if I'm wrong, that stands out is a library, and we commissioned a parking study for the library. So, I don't know, I'd have a hard time for an individual project going below the standard that we're creating here, so I just, did I miss anything?
No, no, I don't think you did, and I'm glad we had this here so the folks can see it. It's got a single-use residential on the first row, a single-use commercial development on the second row, and a mixed-use option on the third row, and none of these require a parking exception, but they are all taking advantage of every component of the code, in particular, the mixed use, which has a shared-use parking reduction based on pretty easy-to-make findings. What I would suggest is maybe keeping the intent of the code of, if you were going to consider an exception, because you don't want to put yourself in a corner. If you had a good reason to consider an exception, I do think you'd want to know what the impact of that exception is. I really would recommend that we require an evaluation of the actual parking demand of the proposed, of the proposed project. Scott, can you make that go away? Thank you. So, we do think that's important. The economic analysis, we brought that forward because that was already in the code, and it didn't have any explanation as to how to do it. If you're interested in having us take a look at that, we could make an adjustment for city council's consideration, but that's what we'd recommend doing.
Well, I'm sorry, referring to that last suggestion or idea, I definitely understand, and this has been very helpful, obviously, the reason for having a parking study if you truly are going to seek an exception, but I do wonder about the viability of an economic analysis, so I do think that that's worthwhile looking at. I don't want to divert the conversation because I had some other questions, but so, I'm letting my fellow commissioners speak up on this one, or I will move on.
How about it?
So, I am very supportive of the changes. I was very excited about the, are you timing me? And particularly the parking changes, and I do have some questions about the, not so much the frontage, I like the, that flexibility, I think that's a really valuable inclusion in this revision. My understanding, though, is that when you were talking about the conditional allowances for storefront offices, you're, there's some various options that we're looking at, and it wasn't clear to me, are those ones that you're proposing that we include all three? It looks like three options? I think we discussed maybe two in the presentation. And I definitely understand, it seems like a good idea to have the flexibility, I can't remember who the public speaker was previously who brought this up about the long vacancies, but I think that having that six-month vacancy, you know, condition in there where they can demonstrate they've been trying to get the, you know, a tenant in there for retail to allow for the conditional use temporarily, and I do think, obviously, at least a year is necessary. But in terms of the option two, which is the kind of walk-in clientele, and that was that new, there's an additional definition about walk-in clientele, I, when I was reading this section about this option, it wasn't really clear to me that those are, the uses there would really be able to meet that kind of, some of them might be, I don't know. And how would that be determined? To me, that seems like that's a big burden on staff to make that call about whether there's that daily, you know, non-appointment type of traffic, that these are really going to generate foot traffic. And so, I, you know, I'm a little worried that it will then kind of somewhat undermine the whole purpose in this very specific location, you know, it's, we're talking, what, four blocks, I think? And so, we, to go to all this effort to really try to generate these, you know, keep retail and keep, you know, retail needs retail, and having that active foot traffic, then to include this, I'm not understanding how that fits with what the goal of this heritage, you know, four-block area would be, whereas option one, to me, seems like it is truly allowing for flexibility in the case of, you know, where there's, there isn't, there's a long vacancy. I see the value in that, in the necessity for flexibility like that. I didn't necessarily see that for option two or three. Did others? I didn't want to, that was kind of one of my major questions, or wanted to hear more discussion about, frankly.
Okay. Steve, do you want to talk about that?
About that specifically?
About anything.
Well, yes, as Sarah reminded us, we heard eloquently at the December 10th meeting about how retail needs retail, and I think, I get the feeling everybody in this room is equally in agreement on the importance of the vibrancy of Main Street and its effect on the overall health of Half Moon Bay, so this is, this is a very important goal to work towards. I worry, and I'm a little bit skeptical of what, I think, this ordinance, I think, is necessary, but maybe not going to be sufficient to solving the challenges that we have, this being the golden age of e-commerce and not really the golden age of brick-and-mortar retail. It's a difficult, it's a difficult challenge. I think that if the problem were that property owners were turning away retail people in favor of office spaces, that would be one thing, that this would, this ordinance would be powerful at solving, but I think there's going to be more work necessary to recruit the kind of businesses that we have as our ideal tenants on Main Street. It makes me, two things, I think all of the new amendments that Jill, you've brought forward to give us more flexibility, I'd support all of those. I think we're going to need to be flexible here to get at the solutions we need. I think we're going to need to be flexible here to get at the solutions we need, and I think that vacancies on Main Street are even worse than not perfectly desirable tenants. So, I'm in support of the flexibility on the frontage depth, the idea of custom industries in spaces, the long vacancy exemption, and temporary uses, I think all of those are good things. Secondly, I wonder whether there isn't an opportunity here for some constituents, like the Main Street businesses, and perhaps the Chamber of Commerce, and perhaps city government to work further on incentives to get the right kinds of tenants in the pipeline, in addition to trying to protect against the less desirable tenants. Having said that, as far as this ordinance goes and the parking flexibility, I'm fully supportive of that.
So, I'll just inject a couple of thoughts before we go another round. I do think that the, your discussion about the duplex and triplex parking and the concerns of the side effects of that in conjunction with the ADU ordinance is worth noting, and I support, and I would ask my colleagues to support retaining the requirement for visitor parking in those duplexes and triplexes. I think, to my mind, the key, one of the great challenges in this problem is it's hard for us to know what the future face of retail will be. One thing we're really good at knowing is that we don't know what's coming. Five years ago, we would look at retail and say, Amazon is destroying it, and, you know, look out below, and now we have Amazon owning Whole Foods. They could put in a retail outlet where visitors and people here could just walk in, pick up things, and an RFID code scans it on its way out, and, you know, it's retail and it's walk-in. I'm not sure it's what we want, but it's an interesting idea that, you know, may make you shudder, I don't know. But there's a future out there that we don't see yet, and my biggest concern is that we don't create a dynamic that is going to keep us away from being able to adapt. I want to be sure that if we facilitate these as good temporary approaches to making good use of the spaces in our downtown, that we haven't created disincentives for them to revert to a outward-facing, customer-facing, community-facing kind of business as the opportunity presents itself. That's one of my concerns about the 20-foot liner. You know, my experience in New York City, when I lived in France many years ago, was that narrow places like that, you might get a bodega or, you know, a cigarette shop, not, I didn't mean to create the cigarette boogeyman, but a very narrow facility, and the space behind it really felt like it was lost as a retail space. So, my concern is to try to find a way through the language, and perhaps you feel that this doesn't, that's fine, to be sure that we manage to leave our options open to be able to restore that use in our downtown. I appreciated the concern about the expense of the traffic study that Mr. Hooker brought up. Personally, I read them, you know, I'm a statistician, so that takes me enough deviations away that, you know, maybe a lot of people don't. But I, I do believe that if we go beyond that, that we actually need them, and, you know, I would say, maybe we should try it for a while, if we find that they're just not helpful, maybe we reconsider our thinking, but so far, to me, they have been useful. You had a note up about specifying what an EV parking space might look like, and I just wanted to speak briefly to that. The scenario we want to avoid is someone putting a 120-volt, you know, 15-amp outlet on the outside of their structure and say, you know, you can plug in here. That's not a meaningful charger capability. I don't want to specify what, you know, like you say, the technology is changing, but ultimately, what an electric charger does is it delivers power at a particular rate, and the level-two power is probably a good lower bound. I'm not suggesting that we have to conform to that standard going forward, that would be too binding to me, but I would say that would be a minimum, a level-two charger in terms of the ability to deliver power in whatever format. I appreciated Sarah's concerns about option two. I hadn't thought about it this deeply, but that's the beauty of the format, is that I get a chance to hear other people's thoughts, and I want to, I want to give voice to that. I would support her position on that, acknowledging that reasonable people can disagree. I think that the value of these changes in their, in the final analysis, I think it's about giving us a chance to experiment, giving the, giving the public a chance to experiment, and giving the marketplace a chance to work in this context for a while, but doing it in a way that doesn't leave us unable to get the kinds of results that we need for the community. The statute calls for us to achieve benefits for the community, and I think that's what this ordinance is trying to do. So, those are the changes that, the comments that I had on it, in general, I'm supportive of the change. So, anybody have another round of thoughts? Rick?
I will say I'm supportive of the 20-foot liner. I mean, I think a retail, a landlord's going to think hard and long about making a significant and permanent change to their infrastructure. I'd be willing to defer to property owners in terms of what they want to do, but I do want to set a minimum standard, at least 20 feet, so I...
Oh, I didn't mean to suggest otherwise.
Okay.
I was thinking 50 with a, maybe a permit use of 20.
Well, I like the language that we've put forth, which has some constraints around that, so it's, we put a burden on the applicant to, if I understand correctly, Jill, we put a burden on the applicant to have a minimum standard along with that, that change. I support the visitor parking for duplexes and triplexes. I think we want to think through those things carefully, because that parking's going to go somewhere, and it's like water. I did have a question, though, you, my day job is in e-commerce. Putting my commercial innovation hat on, one of the things that, you know, we see in terms of change in the retail space are pop-ups, short-term uses, all kinds of crazy things, which drive foot traffic to the downtown area, they create a tension. And so, I'm curious, by definition, is option three embedded into option two? So, do we have flexibility to do short-term items by a use permit? I would encourage us to incorporate option three on page six in terms of how we're thinking about some of these businesses, because I've seen $100-million businesses launched on some of these pop-ups, and they're fantastic, so I just, I think, I think, speaking as somebody who comes from that space, providing flexibility, creativity, and making it easy for people who are trying to make a buck, but they're doing it a way that's attractive and interesting, I think we should encourage that. I also would expand that to include the comment about maker spaces, especially ones that are actively engaging the public. I think it's public good. Odyssey is, I wouldn't necessarily call it a public space, but we've tortured that poor guy through our variance process, and he's really delivered for our community and done something unique and special, so, those are all my comments.
Anybody else? Yes?
Excuse me, I wanted to be just a little bit more specific, and I'll echo what Commissioner Hernandez just said. I support the language regarding the frontage depths, allowing the shallower depth down to 20 feet where the appropriate findings are made, and I support your idea about the pop-ups, too, and the, under the heading of temporary uses.
Yes, I would also say, you know, as opposed to my concerns about option two going over a longer period of time and being difficult to reverse, the temporary aspect of option three really gives us the opportunity to experiment without losing it going forward, so I'm more inclined that way. Yes, Sarah?
I have a question, actually, about that, because it's my understanding that those would be considered active uses, so wouldn't they be already included in allowable? Like, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have to move to one of these options to get, or am I misunderstanding?
Through the chair, can we?
Yes.
Steph needs a little clarification. We also have a running summary of what we think you want to change, and we'll want to run through that a little bit later. So, Commissioner Polgar, the question you have, I think, is exactly what I was mentioning, is where we have the active ground floor bumping into that walk-in clientele definition, so we need to, we need to clean that up a little bit. That said, you could have a use, let's take the good old-fashioned travel agent. I don't think you're going to get another one, but let's remember what they used to be like. They had storefront windows, they advertised packages, people could walk in off the street, and sometimes they really did function like a retail space, so it could, it could conform to the walk-in clientele concept. But there's other uses that we have in our table that are less likely to be that way. The, a real estate office is harder, although you'll, you'll see real estate offices in downtowns of a number of cities where they have really pretty great-looking windows, but it's, you're not going to see a lot of ins and outs on the front door, so whether or not that's walk-in clientele, that's where that, that's that hard point where you said this looks like it could be hard for staff to deal with, and frankly, it could be hard for you as well. So, where we wanted to clarify is whether or not you were thinking about these things independently or in combination. In combination, if it was option one and you had to have a longer-term vacancy, or at least a six-month vacancy, in combination with these other two things, then the risk of having a use come in that didn't really function as walk-in clientele, even though it looked really good on the surface, you would know after a year, and it would be short-term if you had combined these things. You don't have to combine them, but this was some of the reassurance that staff was trying to work towards in putting these together. Now, the other idea that we heard, of course, we agree about pop-ups, they're fantastic, we're seeing a lot of them. A lot of them are on their own ground floor, active ground floor dependent, and they wouldn't need to kick out to this category. They may be in one of the uses that's already going to be okay as a permitted use for the zone, so they wouldn't need to be termed, they wouldn't need a use permit for any of these categories, you wouldn't need to have a long-term vacancy to put in a pop-up. That's a, it's a real flexible thing for a landlord to do if they've got a tricky space and they're trying to activate it. And that's kind of the idea of that food card idea. Those are pop-ups, too, they're just not in a building. They do, that's right. I don't know if that was helpful?
Oh, I think it was.
Okay.
It clarified.
Good.
So, Rick, did you have more thoughts about what belonged in, what might make option three appealing more or less for you?
No, I just think as long as we're approaching an option that gives us that flexibility, and so, what I think I heard was option two kind of includes that, but if not, can you tighten up the language so that we've got a little more flexibility?
Yes, Sarah?
And I just want to say that I am also, I think I already mentioned that I am supportive of the 50-foot, and I do think that it's appropriate to include that 20-foot exception or allow it to go to that, and see, I mean, part of this is to see how that plays out, and I definitely would like to looking, you know, see how it is in two years, what's happened, but I like including that flexibility. And I am definitely supportive of the duplex, triplex, keeping that requirement. That was a concern that I think I raised at the previous meeting about when with this ADU new ordinance with the loss of parking permanently, so I appreciate that you caught that and included that here.
Very good. Anything more from you, Brian, Rick, Steve? All right, Steph, can you give us a summary of everything we've thought?
Unlikely, but I've got one more clarification. On the 20-foot, we've heard support for that from most of you, a little bit of concern as well. I wanted to understand if you were comfortable with the finding that is associated with it, and this is in your CD code, it's 1807025F, Heritage Main Street, number one. The 50-foot frontage depth may be reduced to as short as 20 feet upon issuance of a use permit. Prior to issuing the use permit, the planning commission must find that the proposed use does not require a 50-foot depth to establish an active ground floor dependent use. That's a, that's a really broad statement that we were starting with, and we wanted it to be flexible. If you're concerned, though, about what the long-term effect may be on a building as a whole, that the building is being left in a really good, tenable condition for the back portion as well as the front portion over time, I don't know if you want to add anything else to it. I think you could live with this just fine and see how it's working. I have no idea if you're going to get applications to do this right now.
So, I think I might have been the only person who expressed concerns about 20 feet, and I want to be clear that I wasn't saying I, I think it's impossible, I just wanted to be able to find a way back. And if my colleagues are convinced that if the right retail solution becomes available, that you believe there's adequate motivation for the owner of the property to make the change, that it will happen, I accept the wisdom of my colleagues. So, I am happy with the 20-foot language, no need to resolve an issue there, I think that we're in consensus. What else did we think?
All right, you were clear on the duplex, triplex guidance, so thank you. We will add a reference to minimum level-two for the EV parking space. We'll make sure that the code is not precluding pop-ups as appropriate. I'm not sure that we'll have to change the language at all, but we'll check on that. We've admitted and acknowledged that we need to do a little cleaning on the walk-in clientele, ground floor dependent relationship. With regards to parking exceptions, I heard continued support for requiring a parking demand study. That is not that hard to do, and they're not that expensive. I did not hear across the board support, interest, or even necessarily comfort level with what an economic study would accomplish, and that would actually be the more expensive of the two pieces, so we would like feedback about that.
Let's get, check in with Commissioner Hernandez.
I think that that should be something reserved for a larger project, and I think if we think about where we've, the city has proactively pushed developers to do parking studies in the last few years, it's been the gym that they just built, the library, major significant developments, you know, in the downtown corridor. I mean, we have some sense of what that is, I'm not sure if it's codified.
Excuse me, Rick. So, when you're saying you want to reserve it for big projects, you mean the economic study?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, absolutely. So, and maybe we don't need to, but it just seems like it makes things cleaner if you can set a standard. makes things cleaner if you can set a standard. Like, I wouldn't want to torture, speaking of people who've been tortured, I remember Mr. Hooker had that gas station project when I, when Sarah and I were building our houses next to each other many, many years ago, and, you know, we tortured people in the past around things. I think a, a single project that is, you know, fills a blight, or, you know, takes care of the community, you know, but set a standard, you know. I don't, I don't think it's unreasonable to have, have that, but just please come up with something that you guys think is reasonable. Thank you.
Through the chair, I think, I think we have a reasonable idea. I'd be happy to take out the economic study. I don't think you need it. Big projects are going to hit CEQA usually, and that's where the parking, more of a formal parking demand study will come from as part of a traffic study. To be fair to staff, we're perfectly capable of producing pretty simple, small-scale parking demand studies as part of project review. So, we will address how to, how to write that so that that conclusion will, will happen sort of naturally through the flow of what is entailed in project review. Does that work? Good. Okay.
So, just a couple of closing thoughts, and then I'd, I would like to entertain a motion on this. There was a reference in attachment two about establishing certain kinds of development as development by right, and in my conversations with staff, it became clear that that was not equivalent to making a CDP ministerial, that if there's an intensity of use change, the CDP would still be considered, it would be a discretionary use. So, that resolved concerns about that. The CEQA exemption made perfect sense to me, although I did wince when I saw it referred to as the common sense exemption. It is that, but I, because that's such a politically loaded term, I'd prefer to just call it by its section, because I would hate to see it drive to a different place. And then, in 807, there's a, a list of potential uses that included circus, carnivals, and exhibitions, and I, I had envisioned elephants downtown, and I know that's not what was visualized. I think Pumpkin Festival was fine, but that was fun. And then there was a word I didn't know. On page four, we were talking about how spaces would be demised, and I'm thinking in our staff report to the city council, I don't know what that means, but I know that there's, I know staff meant something important, and I want it to be the right thing, so. And I want to find out what a demised space is. I know what my demise is, and there are many people who would like to hasten it. So, with that in mind, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to, move the recommendation as presented on the screen here.
Would you accept the changes that were summarized by staff as well?
Changes that Jill had summarized.
Second the motion.
Is the motion clear? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the motion's unanimously approved. Thank you. The next item on our agenda tonight is an application for a coastal development permit, an architectural review, to allow the temporary installation of a parklet within three-vehicle parking spaces within the public right-of-way along the west side of Main Street between Kelly Avenue and Merrimott Street, and I believe the staff report will be presented by Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission. Nice to see you all this evening. And as mentioned, this is a temporary pilot project on Main Street, and we wanted to start out with just a couple of basic definitions. You know, the, the idea of a parklet is kind of a, a new concept, and we've included a couple of examples on this slide. Two on the right are within parallel parking spaces, and the one on the left is the angled parking spaces. And a parklet is defined as a small seating area or green space along the edge of a sidewalk that is typically created within the existing roadway or parking spaces. And another definition I wanted to throw out, the, the idea of a pilot project is temporary in nature with a, you know, defined start, start and, and that, that could be moved, and it's a, it's a time where, you know, data can be collected and analyzed and potentially changed in the future. So, a little background, the, the opportunity for this parklet proposal was brought forward by a business owner, Cafe Society, which proposes to install, pay for, and maintain the proposed parklet, and it would be open to the public where anybody could come and use it at any time once it's installed. The parklet would include some additional bicycle parking, boardwalk, planter boxes, built-in benches, a little bit of landscaping, tables, chairs, all within three angled parking spaces within the, the general vicinity of this photograph. Total area covered by the parklet would be approximately 600 square feet to a maximum of four feet for the, the built-in bench along the edge of the parking, the parklet. Also, since it is a pilot project, signs, signage would be installed, the notes that it would be open to the public, as well as opportunity for input, and City Hall's right across the street, so, you know, anybody that has any concerns could always come over and provide us with input as well. In order for the improvements to go into the public right-of-way, a license agreement would need to be approved by our city council. So, that's, that would be the, sort of, the next step. We recommend a one-year expiration on the pilot project, and that would be consistent with both a license agreement and the coastal development permit as indicated in the draft conditions of approval. Let's see, the, up to this point, the parklet design was presented to our recently-formed Architectural Advisory Committee. That was back in November, on the 21st of November, and the AAC was generally supportive of the parklet pilot project idea. Several suggestions were made about construction methods, as well as improvements to drainage, maintenance, and the AAC also suggested removable planter inserts to make it easier to remove the parklet, you know, when that time comes. And then, the, the suggestions were integrated into the plan set. We did provide you with some updated plans this afternoon that included some additional details. The permits, the permits requested include the coastal development permit and architectural review, and, let's see, the initial approach was that this project would be reviewed at a Community Development Director hearing, but we did receive a couple of concerns from surrounding business owners. So, at that point, we did decide to defer to the planning commission. Notices were sent out to the property owners and occupants as required by our code, and notice was published in the newspaper. Staff was mindful that there, you know, were some concerns about the proposed parklet, so Bridgette did hand-deliver notices to all of the business owners along the 500 block of Main Street. The Community Development Director worked with the Chamber of Commerce, made sure that they were informed, and then I also personally met with a couple of business owners just to get a better sense of their concerns. Here's the aerial photograph showing the, showing the site, and notice that it is a mid-block site, you know, a little ways down from City Hall across the street. Here's the site plan, and you may have noticed that sort of this, this extra space here on one of the three spaces is where the new bicycle parking would go, and the planter box, as I mentioned before, goes around the perimeter here. The callouts were the main thing that were added to the plans that were forwarded to you this afternoon.
I'm sorry. Scott, could you repeat that, please?
So, this afternoon, the, we did forward a memorandum to the planning commission that included revised plans that had additional details, and the details included rubber edging, reflective rubber edging, as well as removable inserts for the plants along the edge of the, the proposed parklet, as well as dimensioning the center line of the street.
Thank you.
And, oh, and the curb stop right here.
Very good.
This slide shows the, a section, section of the proposed parklet, and notice that the parklet is angled to follow the crown of the road, but is still ADA accessible. So, let's see, and then here's the landscape plan. It is a note, so they're proposing all succulents, succulent plants that are drought tolerant and relatively low maintenance, and feedback was solicited from some of the local nurseries. Here's an artistic rendering of the proposed parklet. And in this slide, the, the green box indicates the existing 15-minute parking that's just north of where the parklet is proposed, and this, this, as, as currently proposed is, would not change, but we, we have received a couple of concerns about, you know, the three parking spaces being removed as part of this project. And the planning commission recently reviewed, or we provided a parking occupancy study during peak hours, and I don't know if you, I guess it was back in December, but that, that parking occupancy study did show that there is parking available during peak, peak hours within the downtown area. We also heard back about the cost and public use, and again, the, the applicant owner of Cafe Society is, would fund this entire thing, and if different parking needs do, you know, if the commission does decide that you would like us to pursue maybe some changes, some additional 15-minute parking along this portion of Main Street, then that's something that, that could be reviewed by the city council during the license agreement. So, that's something still to consider. As far as the analysis for the planning commission, this portion of Main Street is considered a visual resource area, so we did include the, the findings for that within the draft resolution. And the main reason why this is in conformance with the visual resource area requirements is that, you know, the parklet is, you know, relatively subordinate compared to the historic buildings in the area. And then, a couple of other things, you know, the downtown specific plan, we did include some language within the, the draft resolution for that as well. For this particular project, we feel that a CEQA exemption would be appropriate. Let's see. And then, next steps, you know, Jill did mention about the town center plan in the previous item, but I think you wanted to go into a little bit of information how to, how that relates.
One of the things that staff can do if, if this is approved and implemented is, because of its location in particular, we can really keep an eye on it, watch parking patterns, and stay in contact with Main Street business owners about foot traffic and how it's affecting them, if it's a benefit, if it's, if it's not working for them, if it's a wash, we want to know. In preparing to work on a town center plan, we, we know we're going to look at streetscape. Happiness-based sidewalks are narrow. It's really hard to do outdoor display. It's hard to fit a table and a chair in, and it's hard to have that kind of activity that a lot of people are really interested in having, and it just doesn't meet accessibility requirements and, and other needs around that. So, we hope to learn a lot if, if this gets approved, and that can inform future folks who are going to be working on the town center plan with the community and with the planning commission.
With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. We suggest taking public input, and, let's see, the, the architect that designed the parklet is also here. Owner of Cafe Society was not able to make it.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Jill. Colleagues, Steve, you had some questions. Rick, you can follow? As you like. What's the pleasure of the commission? Do you want to hear from the applicant now? All right. Good evening. No, you need to hit that button again.
Okay. Yeah, you can hear me. It's really great to kind of see this process going on. I can remember when I went to school at UC Berkeley a long time ago, we were always studying spaces and how to make them more vibrant and, and friendly to people coming. In this kind of day and age where so many people are kind of behind computers all the time and stuck to their devices, it's really nice to kind of counteract that where people have a place to congregate and meet, and I think it's a, a real basic human need. And of all things, the kind of satisfy that, a place to go out and eat or have a cup of coffee and, and maybe run into somebody in the neighborhood you know can work out really good. I think a lot of people are going to use this. Just personally, I live in town and I bought my house so I could actually walk downtown. It's a really pleasant way to not have to get in a car. And so, of course, parking is really a, a big concern, and I understand the other people here that are concerned about it. It's, you know, when you go to Paris and you sit in a sidewalk cafe, or you go to Amsterdam and you're having a cup of coffee, or you're going to Vienna to a coffee house, if, if everything was only designed around the car, you wouldn't have any of those things. And Americans really do kind of, urban planning's been so much developed around the car, and then the tradition just kind of gets forgotten. So, I think that this parklet will really help kind of counteract that. As far as Harpo is concerned, he's sorry he can't be here. He's sick. And of course, somebody, that parklet could be used by Harpo and his clientele. But also the bakery, I go down to the bakery all the time and get a donut and a cup of coffee as a break, and, and there's one little bench, you know, but if you have two people, then it's kind of hard. So, I can easily see the bakery using that area. This is for, for everybody. And then, as far as the other stores are concerned, the parking spaces are gone, but more people are drawn to that particular area. More people will be doing window shopping that'll be looking into the shops that are there. And so, I think that there's a real benefit to the businesses in spite of the, the parking being done. So, I kind of designed the parklet kind of open under the sidewalk and really kind of open to the public so you could just kind of stroll into it, that it didn't feel like it was a private area. Of course, I wanted to protect the people from the cars, so we have this kind of bench that goes around, and then the planting area also is a good buffer, and then also it's quite a distance away. There's a big roadway. So, we wanted to really make this kind of a safe space, but mainly wanted to have a place that really did all the things that you guys were talking about earlier. So, if you have any questions, I'll be here to answer them.
Thank you very much. Steve?
Thank you. Chris, in the, the bike parking area, do you intend a physical enclosure of that?
No, I tend to intend a physical enclosure on that, so, but a bike rack. I mean, that sort of thing, but not a place that, if you had something in mind, I would entertain it, but I'm not quite sure how that would work.
Well, I, I ask because it appears to me that the, the east end of the bike parking area would be about two feet from the end of the parking space stripes, so getting fairly close to traffic on Main Street. close to traffic on Main Street.
Yeah, I, I, I probably should do a little more detailing exactly how big the bike rack is, how much the distance is between.
Rick?
So, I just, first of all, I love this project. I, I love going to Cafe Society. If it was not disruptive in a negative way to the retail businesses on Main Street, I'd rip out all the parking and put in more parklets, so I'm
We haven't had the public hearing yet, so
But, 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 that's my, that's my comment. But the question I have for you is, when I look at the edge of the parking, should we change the striping so there's a little bit more, like, like, I'm concerned about people, kids in particular, hanging around this area and not having a clear visual area to keep cars from sort of veering closer to the parklet? Can we, should this design have some kind of striping or something to visually discourage drivers from going in this area?
I think that that would be graphically helpful. What I tried to do is, first of all, give space so you'd have to really, I mean, you can see it's set back from the parking spaces about four feet, and then I really wanted the planter to be a buffer area that if somebody did really was a terrible driver, then it's hard to go through all that, and then you'd have the bench, so in some ways, I've tried to make this kind of contain and open up only to the sidewalk and not the street. You can see that the edges don't even open onto the, into, into the street, so it's kind of flows off the sidewalk was the concept, and I think it's a safe design.
Is this consistent with parklets in other communities in the Bay Area?
Well, San Francisco has done a whole lot, and it's really kind of neat to go up and see them and see these neighborhoods that are getting more vibrant, and, and it does work real well, the ones I've been, happened to have been cafes and kind of coffee houses and that sort of thing. Redwood City's just done a marvelous job with taking their downtown that was just terrible and then putting in all those sidewalk cafes and the trees and stuff. Now, they have a lot more room than we have, and we can't, every, everybody has different problems, but it's really nice to see as you see that, or Palo Alto's kind of done it from the start, and people, I, you know, end up going to those areas, you know, in Redwood City where you can do that, so, you know, it'd be nice to do some of that here.
But in terms of the size, is it consistent with what you see in other communities like Redwood City? I, I'm just trying to make sure that this fits within the footprint of what other people have done successfully.
Yeah, parklets, kind of as Scott was talking about, are these small areas, and that's what San Francisco's been doing, where they take out like three parking spaces and then they make these parklets, so it is very, it's been, it's been kind of currently tested there in, in the city, so it is, that's kind of why you call it a parklet, if it got bigger, then it wouldn't be, so, and if, and if smaller, then there just isn't enough seats to really make it worthwhile.
Thank you. I have this question for city staff. I also like the donut shop next door, there's a bench in front. It's a little tricky navigating that sidewalk. Have you sort of thought through the, just the circulation pattern of foot traffic in, in that area when the parklet goes into place? And, and I say tricky because it's like, in my case, kids, dogs, maybe bicycles, all kinds of things, and, you know, people, people are colliding in that space, not fast, but just sort of getting tangled around each other, so have you guys thought about the circulation pattern in front of the establishment?
Well, the question has come up in the past, and, you know, normally, we, we would require an encroachment permit for, you know, street furniture along the sidewalk, so this, you know, this would be, you know, if the commission does see some, you know, something that could, you know, to be, to change within the vicinity of the, the parklet, that's certainly something that could be included with this project, so.
Okay, thank you. Still have my questions.
Sarah?
Just to, wanted to clarify in terms of the bigger picture of parklets and with respect to this pilot project, it's my understanding that the town center planning and, and that, that process would look at, at kind of how parklets could fit in, and in, with respect to the timeframe for this one-year pilot project, how will that overlap? Because it, you know, this is, this is truly a pilot project, and, and so, will it be kind of, there will be this gap essentially between planning and, and, you know, the broader planning and this pilot project?
I think the answer is how, how it goes. If it goes really well and town center planning is not ready to pick it up, we could proceed with some kind of a program with criteria. We've heard concerns about parking from adjacent businesses, we've also heard concerns from other businesses who really want one, so it's, there's a lot to learn here, and the I, the goal here is for it to be successful and implemented when it's, when it's appropriate. And I do want, I want to note a couple of things on that circulation, if, if you're okay with this, to, to loop back on that question. There was a, there's a lot of care taken here as to where this was positioned along the frontage because there's so many existing features, like street trees, things that we like, but things that are, you've got to get around, and we need to make sure that there's ADA access to the parklet between trees, between tables and chairs. This is a combination that, from, from my past practice, is considered to be the most comfortable sort of physical space for people to sit because it has that combination of fixed seating and movable seating, it has both, so you know what the boundaries are, but you can also customize it anytime you use it. So, you can see those two gaps that the architect provided for, for that access. We're going to have to monitor, you know, and see how, see how it works, but that, that was, we wanted to have at least two places where you could get into the parklet. It is a really tight sidewalk right there, I understand.
I just wanted to clarify, I'm pretty 99.9% sure I know the answer, but I just want to clarify that this would, if it were continue the, the lease for, or use allowance for this, it would, this would always remain public space?
Yes, that's correct. That hasn't been discussed at all, having it, you know, private or charging a fee or anything like that to, to use the parklet.
Let me be real clear. Anybody can sit there who wants to.
Correct.
Okay, great.
Brian? Me too. If there are no other questions from the commission, let's open the public hearing, and I'd like to invite Ms. Ashcroft back to the dais, or to the podium, sorry, we're on the dais.
On Main Street. The concern was that, we're losing parking places, and how many more of these want to come back on Main Street, we're going to be losing more parking places. This would be the first one, but there'll be others they're going to come up with, the same thing. And I don't think we can afford, we don't have parking garages, we don't have parking lots for people to park in, and the town has always been pretty unique, and I like, I like keeping it unique.
Our rules don't let them respond directly to your comments, you can address any other comments that you might have, and we'll, we'll pick them up in discussion later.
But all I have to say is
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Ashcroft. The next speaker is Jim Henderson. And he will be followed by Janice Salameno.
Good evening, Commissioners. Well, I am less than euphoric about this situation, however, I do come with an open mind and some concerns. One of them, of course, is how that's going to affect the, the parking. Now, with the total buildout, including the, the bike area, I estimate that we could lose 22 to 25% of parking in that particular block area, and it's got to have a domino effect with some of the other merchants. I'm also concerned about the safety factor, God help us if a kid gets hit by a car. So, that's, that's a major question mark right there, that whole situation. I'm also concerned about the possibility of favoritism. The applicant obviously is going to benefit from increased, increased revenue at the benefit of us, the taxpayer, because we own the streets and the sidewalks and all that. So, what do we get back? Is he going to pay us a fee? Has there been any discussion about what we get? Or are we just going to allow him to use our facilities to make extra money? And, and then too, as far as favoritism is concerned, once you do this, if somebody else wants to do it, you're almost obligated to let them do it. Otherwise, you're showing favoritism, which, I don't know, could be a, a legal lawsuit, or at the very least, a black eye for City Hall, which would not go good as far as the public is concerned, so, and, and what about special events? What about the Fourth of July? What about the, the Pumpkin Festival? Is this going to be removed during that time and then replaced, or is it just going to sit there, and is it going to take the Corps of Engineers to be able to move it? So, I think there's a lot of questions, so we shouldn't rush, rush into this prematurely. My philosophy has always been, let's go slow and do it right, so I would ask you to, even though one of the commissioners obviously loves the concept of these things, and that's, that's cool, that's fine, I hope that won't prejudice to his, his mind in this matter, because we need to think of the overall concept, so thank you for letting me share my opinions with you.
Thank you. The next speaker, just to note that it's generally not in order to applaud at commission meetings because we have to respect the views of the minority. The next speaker will be Janice Salameno, followed by Audrey Seaton.
Good evening, Commissioners, as mentioned, I'm Janice. I live downtown on Merrimontes, and I've been a resident for almost 30 years, since before the sea died at McCoffee. I'm actually here to object. I'm actually a frequent customer of that area, I love McCoffee's, I love Cafe Society, I love the bakery, but I'm object to it because we already have a parklet, and it's called MacDutra Park. And if you go to the bakery, it's exactly equidistant between where this parklet is proposed and where MacDutra Park is. I'm also concerned because of the other impacts. I won't address parking, I agree with that, everybody else is talking about that, but it's unnecessary, and for me, I think we need to have a reason to do something rather than to not do it. And if it is open to everybody, I don't think somebody from Nano's is going to cross the street to use it. If they're willing to cross the street to use it, they can go to MacDutra Park, the bakery can go to MacDutra Park. I myself have gone to Cafe Society, picked up my bagel and coffee, and gone to MacDutra Park, so I want the business to be successful, but I don't really think it serves any need that we have in the community. Other practical things is the parking, the impact on the parades that we have downtown. I think if we put it in, it will destroy the lovely downtown view, I think there was a view corridor mentioned earlier tonight, nice open space, we don't need the greenery from it, we already have the trees, and like I said, I don't think it would really be used by all, it's pretty clear it's a Cafe Society benefit. The other thing is it's proposed as a trial. Once we ask Harpo to spend all this money, it's going to be harder to ask him to take it out, and so instead, I would propose, if people are really interested in exploring this idea, is to put in something equal to a story, story poles, I think, when you're building a building, you put the orange plastic things, is to block off those three parking spaces for a month, three months, however long, with a sign, as Mr. Phillips has proposed, questions go across the street, feedback go across the street, and if after three months nobody minds having those three spots gone, then maybe consider moving forward. Finally, if it does go forward, my concern with the actual design is twofold. The bike parking work currently is, you have to go through another existing parking space to get to it, so either you won't be able to get to it, so it's a moot point, it's a nice to have, but it's not practical, or you have to go into the street to be able to put your bike there, that's a concern. Also, I was told the, part of the benefit of this project would be to get the chairs off the sidewalk, but I see the chairs on the sidewalk, so which is it? So, that's it. I hope we don't go forward with this project and that we make better use of MacDutra Park. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Audrey Seaton, please, followed by Kathy Bristol.
Hi there. I own Small Town Sweets Candy Store, and I am Harpo's neighbor. The parklet idea seems to be a new and inviting way for business owners to bring in more business for themselves, as a lot of cities are doing this, but Half Moon Bay is not like other cities with parking garages and parking lots, and taking away the three parking spaces from our little downtown would hurt businesses like me. Even in this off-season month of January, most mornings for me to stock my store and find a space on the 500 block of Main, I have to circle two to five times, hoping to find someone backing out. Weekends are the worst, even at this time of year. Taking away these three parking spots would make it that much harder for me and also my customers. Here are some of my other concerns. Safety. Long bed trucks, vans, and delivery trucks parked in the angled parking spaces make for a narrower Main Street. Passing oncoming vehicles is difficult now. With the addition of a parklet, this would be an ongoing hazard. Just think if you allowed one parklet per block. I was told that anyone is welcome to use the parklet. Let's say Nano's frozen yogurt customers wanted to sit on the sunny side of the street and use the parklet. I think this would encourage jaywalking with everyone, but especially the junior high kids after school. You can't police the way public will sit in the parklet. The one time a kid decides to sit on top of the planter, what if he falls and is hit by a passing car? I've found three reports of vehicles hitting parklets, so it's not unheard of. For example, in the city of Pleasanton, a DUI driver hit a parklet, debris flew and injured three people. What about the unwanted attention to the parklet? On occasion, MacDutra Park has had people camped out and sleeping in the park. What about garbage? What about alcohol and Cafe Society? Is it against the law to drink on the sidewalk tables or on the parklet? Instead of creating a Main Street obstacle, why not utilize three spaces in the city parking lot and create a parklet there that would be better enforced for everyone to enjoy? Thank you, and I hope you'll consider the many concerns before any approval is given to this project.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kathy Bristol.
I'm Kathy Bristol, I'm the owner of Personal Effects, and I, Harpo and I share a wall because we're both the tenants in the historic Oddfellows Building. Welcome. And I do believe in the good neighbor policy, so I want to address this more as clarifications and definitions of what a parklet entails, and I've done some reading. Parklets have been around for, since 2012 in different cities, and a little bit before that, so they're not new, new. One of the definitions that I find coming up again is, a parklet is defined as a privately-owned public open space, and as seen by city officials, I understand it's a semi-temporary urban experiment, so those are definitions that are out there. Privately-owned public open space, there's some fine lines in that definition. A parklet is a public space and not an extension of an existing private business. It's another definition that I have read over and over again in other literature about parklets. parklets. A parklet in the urban landscape acts as a public park and a gathering place which allows for more human interaction. That's all good, something I'm very much behind. Parklets appeared more in larger cities, where you needed that interaction. Where a smaller city, appropriate? Not sure. And, as Janice said, or as it has been said, that MacDutra Park is thirty-six steps away from the proposed parklet. A parklet is a community project, not a business opportunity. Since it's a pilot project for the city of Half Moon Bay, and this was addressed by Scott, what is the criteria going to be to judge it? I now hear that it's possibly a year, which I didn't know before, so that's helpful. And I'm, I'm curious as to what the criteria is based on to judge the project. It has caused disharmony in the 500 block, which was not there before. I was in the 600 block for twenty years. I am sort of the new kid on the 500 block, but I'm not the new kid in town. So I have been here for a while. And finally, one thing is cleaning and maintenance of the parklet. Who does that? Where's the fine point between the privately-owned and the public, open space? Those are my concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Bristol. The next speaker is Desi Sanchez, to be followed by Joyce Logan, please. Welcome.
My name is Desi Sanchez, owner of Half Moon Bay Bakery. And yeah, I think everybody has been talking about the parking space, right? And I think my business is going to be heard more than anybody, because I'm right there in the corner there, you know, 514 Main Street. And my business is very peaceful, like, a lot of attention, right? They come and go. Like I told Scott last time we talked, my customers, they only stay in the store no less than five minutes. And as you guys see, and a lot of communities see how people go in and out, we're getting busy and busy. And you imagine if they got to take out three parking spaces? I talked to Harpo with this already once, too. I don't, you imagine, your customers stay for one or more than one hour in your coffee shop? Those customers going to move my parking space? Wasn't happy, wasn't happy with my customers. And that's really, I really worry about it, you know? And I've been thinking about it, how we can make changes. I know this, like you guys said, it's nice to do, but as a business owner, I know things are right, you know? Let's just keep the Main Street like it is. I've been there as a worker for twenty-seven years, as an owner for years. And I've been living in the Main Street for thirty-one, thirty-one years, you know? Every six days a week, I'm there all the time, every day. And when I heard about this project, you know, kind of like, make me a little bit upset, you know, because I'm just starting my business, and see these changes, I'm not really happy about it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. The next speaker is Joyce Logan. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm not particularly for or against. I'm wanting to share some of the concerns that have been raised here. My list has been brought up by most of these people already. I moved here from Pacific Grove, and a parklet was built right next to our building in Pacific Grove, and I brought a couple of pictures that I took when I was down there last week. One of my concerns, or concern, is safety. What happened with the parklet that was built in Pacific Grove was, the structure evolved into having railroad ties to provide security for the people sitting. The cars were too close and too fast, even at fifteen miles an hour or twenty miles an hour going by, and people didn't feel safe. So what was originally constructed out of redwood and what looked substantial, it eventually evolved into railroad ties, and that's what this picture will show. And I will leave these, because I have these on my camera. So I, safety is a big issue. Sightlines are another issue. People's heads, according to the drawing, from what I can tell, are up. This building elevated up to, again, provide safety and some wind-blowing protection. The street there is not any windier than our Main Street. And people's napkins blew, their food blew, and so they made the park, the parklet taller. So those are a couple of things that were not addressed by other people here, that I'd like you to have as part of your consideration.
Thank you very much for that insight. The next speaker is Telma Flosi, Flossi, I apologize if I butchered your name. Welcome.
Hi.
You may need to push the button on the microphone.
Good evening. My name is Telma, and I've been living in Half Moon Bay for over twenty years now. And for as long as being here, there is always plenty of parks in downtown Half Moon Bay, and unfortunately, it never amounted to, that never resulted in thriving business, right? We always have the same, we always have the same concern that, how are we going to improve downtown? And, and we always have the parks. And the business keeps moving and changing, closing, and not thriving at all, right? So maybe it's a good time to give a chance to something new, and then everybody else's business might brew for that, right? So I really hope you will agree that a chance might be welcome, can be positive, more like you have been expressing the whole night, a vibrant downtown. I'm sorry, I'm getting a little nervous.
It's all right, you're doing great.
My block is the 500. I'm across the street from, from the Cafe Society. I've been downtown now for three years, and it's a boring block. It's a, part of it is taken by City Hall, then after that, you have a big street, and then after that, you have an empty firehouse. You know what I mean? It's a very boring block. So we have people that is go and stay right where Pasta Moon is, it's Italia or Cacac, because there's people there. So people want to be on those blocks. And when I'm working there, what I see is just a bunch of people just passing by, because there is nothing attractive right there. You know, or they go to the bakery, who actually has a nice place to sit, right? But not in our block, it's just a bunch of empty, a super narrow sidewalk, right? It's like someone mentioned here, I believe you. So you can, like, right in front of the bakery, actually, the bakery would actually get even more business, because people want to stay there and eat your sandwich and your donut, and unfortunately, they don't have space. You know, it's, it's that much, and there's dogs, and there's people, just two benches. So, you know, what are you going to do? You're not going to sit, unfortunately, on, on the park, as nice as it is, it's still kind of so-so, I guess. You know what I mean? You're not close to the stuff. You're not waiting for your friend outside getting something, you're sitting there enjoying the sunshine. So, let's see. So I believe that by approving this project, we will successfully result in a more vibrant downtown. We serve as a local space to our community to enjoy outside, disconnect from their screen, and truly improve business for everybody around. And we actually agree, right? That Cafe Society is going to get more business. But it's very no sense of us to think that they're going to be the only ones who are going to benefit from that. You know, a family is going to stay there, the kids are busy, like, you know, annoying the parents, and they're like, "Go get a candy," you know? "Go get a donut." So we have to see too, that when people stop there and look around, and they see a candy store, and they see, like, you know, my store across the street, or they're going to go check a jewelry on the neighbors. So they're going to have time to breathe in, enjoy, and actually like, you know what? Wow, look, have you ever checked that store out? Instead of just passing by to go to the other bakery.
If you could wind up your remarks.
Sure, sure, sure. We serve as, so anyway, the only things is, so I, I, please, I hope that you don't let this opportunity pass by to make this block relevant, just because we're going to miss three parking spots. I think that's it. Thank you so much. And, oh, just one more thing, too. Regarding to, to the bakery portion of that, from what I understand, they're still going to have two green park spaces. What is already an advantage from every other business, because it's pretty much their own park. Someone stopped there, super fast and moved fast, so I don't see, they already have some advantage too on that.
I think we understand.
Yeah. Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you very much. And the last green sheet I have for this item is Leslie Duckworth, please.
I thought I was going to be the most unpopular person in the room after following everybody, but thank you, I appreciate the support. First of all, hats off to city staff for making it ADA accessible, because there's very few spaces in town that are actually ADA accessible, so I think that's a, a big positive. But my main point was really to talk about the number of people in this room who talk about wanting a vibrant, active community. It takes a little bit of change, it takes a little bit of bravery to maybe look at things a little differently, try something different, try something a little bit more unique, in order to really push forward with building a more vibrant downtown Half Moon Bay. Kathy, your store, I think you will benefit, because there's going to be guys sitting out on the bench outside while their wives are inside shopping. You'll probably get more customers. And I do think that even though MacDutra Park is just down the street, you know, this thing is really not very good, is it? It's, it's, it's concrete, it's very cold, it's not super inviting, there's nothing really intimate about it, whereas this parklet is warm, it's wood, it's tactile, it's much more neighborhood, and very inviting. And I, what else did I say? Oh, parking. So I know that on the website, the city website, there is a parking study available that was done across, I want to say August, September, October, something like that, several times of the day during the week, there was an assessment taken of parking downtown. And the one that really stood out to me the most was the one that was taken on the Saturday of the End of Summer Music Festival, where there were multiple events going on. It was a beautiful day, we had a ton of people in town, and if you look at that plan, within two or three blocks tops, you had about a fifty percent parking occupancy. There is actually an awful lot of parking in town. What is missing, I believe, is signage showing where that parking is, and I think we could improve a lot with that. Personally, I think this is an amazing addition, and I think it's a very creative addition, and I would love to see this happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak who hasn't provided a green sheet? Please. And if you could fill out one of those green sheets at the conclusion, that would be great. Thank you very much. No, you need to hit.
Okay, now it's working. Whoa, whoa.
My name is Philip Chapnick, I've been a Half Moon Bay resident, I don't know, twenty, twenty-six, twenty-seven years now, you know, so I've seen the town for, for some, some amount of time. And I have to say, I personally came here to support Harpo. I'm, you know, I came in because I, I like the Cafe Society, and I know him pretty well, and thought I'd come down to see a meeting. I've never been to a planning committee meeting. I'm, I was a little bit surprised in hearing some of what I thought were, you know, fairly cogent objections to the parklet. You know, the safety concerns were something I hadn't really thought about, and it's not something I think about that much. But listening to all the arguments, you know, I, I would encourage the, the commission to, to do it as a trial plan. I, I think, I, I'm very convinced that for the city to thrive, we need to try new things. You know, to me, the city looks pretty much the same as it did when I moved here twenty-six years ago. I mean, there's even, seems like the vacancies are even the same as they've been for twenty years. And I think it's important, if we want to grow as a, as a community and a city, to try new things. This seems like a good one. I, I, I'm very aware of that. I think it would be good to be treated as a pilot project. I didn't realize that that's how it was being viewed, but I think that's a good idea. And I think it's very important, you know, I, I mean, I think it's important that our, for instance, the bakery shop, I, I hear that, that's a solid argument. It's hard to, if you have to bring, go to your store and load it up, and there's no parking to get there. I, I think that's, that's a real concern. You know, but I, I think we need to experiment, you know, and that's what I really support. I think this would be a very good chance to try a more European-style urban feel to Half Moon Bay. Because I think, you know, I've lived overseas for a long time, and one of the things that struck me was how many people were just walking around the streets, which we don't have. I mean, I'm actually opposed to having a lot of parking in town. I, I personally use my bike. One of the reasons I like living here is I can do everything on my bicycle. Now, I'm fortunate, I'm physically able to, but I realize some people, you know, need to have cars so they can get where they're going. But I think it's important as a town to really develop a modern concept of what a town means, and not be looking so much backwards, but trying to look forwards. So I'd encourage this as a pilot project. I think, you know, coming here, leaving, I think that's what's really important about it. And I think it'd be very important to be monitored by the city and its staff and the businesses, just to see what it really does. I have a feeling it wouldn't put anyone out of business in six months or a year, and I think it'd be good to try. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to staff. Would you like to hear staff respond to some of the concerns that have been raised? Please.
So, we'll, we'll start off with the, you know, we heard, you know, some, definitely some concerns about safety, and that was certainly on the top of our, our gen, our list of items to go through on the parklet. And we did solicit feedback from the city engineer. Several changes were requested by the city engineer, which have been incorporated into plans. For one, the rubber edging that's reflective, as well as, he did ask for, you know, a, sort of a perimeter, perimeter to the parklet that would, you know, shield any traffic coming by. So that, we do feel that that was sufficiently addressed, and, you know, that can be seen in other parklets in other communities as well. This is, this is not a, necessarily a new concept, that's, it has been, they have been implemented in other communities, and we haven't heard of any, you know, major catastrophe associated with the parklets. So, let's see, the loss of parking spaces, we did touch upon that, that, you know, parking, two recent parking surveys have been conducted, you know, showing that there is parking available within the downtown during peak hour, peak weekend hours. You know, that is something that we, you know, we could, of course, do more research on, and, you know, compile more data on, you know, parking, and, you know, especially during the week. Fee charged, there will be a fee associated with the license agreement, that's yet to be determined, but normally it's a nominal fee that's associated with a license agreement. So, let's see, maintenance, that, we have discussed that with the project applicant, and they would be responsible for maintaining the parklet in good order. Otherwise, the city would have the ability to revoke the license agreement and have the, have the improvements removed. So, parade impacts, that was also discussed with the, the city engineer, and the thought was, is that there is room, you know, the, the actual street width to still, you know, have the Fourth of July parade and other events throughout the year that normally take place on Main Street, even with the parklet installed. place on Main Street, even with the parklet installed. Yes. So another point that we'd like the commission to note is that the parklet doesn't actually extend all the way out to the end of the parking space. That there is some space between the, the outer edge of, of the park, the striped parking space and where the parklet, parklet is proposed. So with that in mind, there, there would be enough room to, you know, conduct the Fourth of July parade and, you know, other events throughout the year. Let's see, I'm seeing a comment about garbage and alcohol consumption. So at this point, alcohol would not be allowed to be consumed within the parklet. Additional licensing would be required through ABC, which requires a sort of enclosed space. And that's not included at this point. So. Bike racks, we can bring that up with the city engineer. We, we didn't specifically talk about the, the distance from the, you know, the vehicle path of travel where, compared to where the, the new bike rack would go. So that's certainly something, something that we could bring up and, you know, a minor change between now and, you know, the license agreement review. Maybe we'll start, stop there and be happy to answer any other questions the commission has.
Okay, thank you. Steve, looks like you're ready to go?
Yeah, thanks. Scott, on the question of the separation between the, the east end of the planters and the vehicle path of travel, did, did you, did you folks do research that shows that this is consistent with best practices in other existing parklets?
Yes. And there's actually a parklet similar to this that's been installed in the Sunset District of San Francisco and on the, within angled parking. And the dimensions are similar to that one that's, that's currently in use. So.
I, I think from the site plan that, that the distance from the east end of the planter to the end of the stripes is about three or four feet. And I guess, I'm trying to think, how, how close do cars in their travels come to the end of the stripes? Pretty close sometimes. Just trying to get a feel if, what our level of confidence is about the, about the amount of separation there.
Right. I, I'm gonna pop in a little bit here. The depth of this parklet as proposed is 10, it's just over 10 feet from face of curb. And so it is quite a bit inset from the end of the parking spaces. The parking spaces are definitely proud of it from the perspective of, of the street. So there is room to do something that one of the speakers, I don't know if it was actually a commissioner or a speaker who, who brought this to mind, but the striping, it was a commissioner, yes. There, there is room to put some additional visibility striping around the outside edge of this parklet. And that's a pretty common practice with other, other ones that we've seen installed. It's, because it's a pilot project, we've been trying to keep it with a light touch because it needs to be completely removable in the event that it's, it doesn't go well. We, we're gonna wanna have it taken out quickly. If it goes reasonably well, it'll, it'll last the duration of the year. I think adding paint is, is perfectly fine to, to add that to it. At this point, I'm not sure that the bike rack is really necessary if that's just not going to be working in this space. I would, I would rather use that space for a safety striping. So that's just a suggestion from staff having heard the input that we have from the community. There are bike racks nearby. There may be other locations that work better than, than in this space out in the, out in the street side of the sidewalk.
Brian?
Well, I got more comments. I, I want to thank the public for, for all of the, the comments and questions that they raised. And thank you, Scott. I think you answered most of my questions regarding maintenance and alcohol and the point on bike parking. I was also struck with the proximity of this parklet to, to MacDutra. And my initial thought was, you know, well, jeez, MacDutra's right there. You know, certainly not hard to get a cup of coffee and go walk over to MacDutra. But I think the whole intent of this is to sort of, you know, catalyze and, and enliven this area. So just as much as it catalyzes the, the street frontage and the area in front of the bakery and in front of Cafe Society and that whole area, you know, I think the hope would be that, you know, people also spill over into MacDutra. And we see more, more use and more, more activity there. With regards to the bike parking, thank you, Jill, for that, that jumped out at me. I mean, I would suggest, if anything, we move the bike parking to MacDutra. And, and actually, you know, sign this area that that's the area that, that where people go to, with, can park, park their bikes over there. I've, I ride my bike down here often with my kids and, and have been guilty of blocking the sidewalks or, or blocking the gate that Cafe Society wishes to use sometimes. So, so it would be great to have some signage there to direct people to where they could go parking. One thing I'm struck by is often in these conversations, comments about, you know, we shouldn't do this or that because there's currently an unsafe condition. And my, my sort of thinking is maybe we should address the unsafe condition. So rather than, rather than that. So if, if, if traffic's a problem going up and down Main Street, or, or, or it's not necessarily safe for bicyclists to go up and down Main Street, let's try to find a way to make that safe. You know, whether that's through signage or actually designating that area as sort of a, you know, you know, I know there's different things that other cities have done as far as making bikeways or, you know, even green paint down the road or, or some of those types of things. So people are more aware that it's a, it's a shared space. It's not dedicated specifically to vehicles. I know the question about the length of vehicles on Main Street and parking has come up before. And I don't know what we can do about that. But, but I think, you know, rather than not trying to something new because of some, some out there concern about safety or other things, I think, you know, it's an opportunity to sort of think through, how can we do this in a way that makes it safe and actually provides for it? So. The, the other comment that I heard that I think is, is good is providing more information about other places that people can park throughout the downtown area. You know, just across the street there, there's the parking lot that's available to the public at City Hall, making sure that people know that they can, you know, park there and, and just the other areas. So I appreciate there, there are people who need to, you know, stop, run into the bakery, grab some donuts and that sort of thing. But for a lot of the types of uses, you know, people are either biking there or they can walk around the corner. And that walking along the street frontage will just hopefully, you know, help everywhere. I, I like the idea that this is a, this is a trial plan. I think, you know, if we're going in it with that mindset, knowing that this can be, you know, changed or removed at any time if it is causing problems. And, and I'm sure Harpo is very aware of that, that this is a pilot project. So he's going into this with the, with the knowledge that there's, you know, making an investment that might not be permanent. And so that needs to be clear to Harpo that, you know, this may or may not work. But, but I think, I, I agree with the comments that, you know, I mean, there's the sort of definition of insanity and, and, you know, doing the same thing over and over again and getting the same results. Sometimes Main Street can feel that way. So I think, I think trying something different is, is exciting and, and good. The question was raised about, with the parklet, if that would give us the opportunity to free up the tables and chairs that are currently on the sidewalk there. So I would encourage staff to give some consideration to that. But, so yeah, all in all, I think, you know, I don't wanna approach this just because I know, working and planning, parklets have been the, the new shiny object for the past five years or so. And, and I've seen them work well and I've seen them not necessarily work well. But I think there's only one way to really see how it would work. Because I think the, you know, the narrow sidewalks, and I've heard for years, people come up with different ideas about, you know, how can we widen those sidewalks to provide some chairs? So not having another real obvious solution to that, I think this is, this is something, something that works. And I think, you know, hopefully it would benefit everybody up and down that block. Hopefully it gives us some good data, good information that can help us as we move forward with the downtown master plan. And I think to the extent that we can tie this space in with, with activating MacDutra by, you know, encouraging that sort of pedestrian connection, if it's moving the bike parking down to MacDutra, encouraging just more people just going through that whole corridor there, I think, I think will be good. So, so all in all with that, I'm, I'm, I'm supportive of, of moving forward with this as a, as a, as a temporary pilot program.
Rick, and then Sarah?
Yeah, I had two points. One, I wanted to clarify my comment. So people heard the second part of my comment, but the first part of my comment was if it doesn't negatively impact the businesses. So that's how I preface this. I'm curious, I mean, I, I, I'm a bit of a nerd. I read planning literature in my spare time. But I'm curious from, from my professional planners, including you in this, Brian, what are the big picture economic impacts of parklets? What are, what are the experiences that cities have? I know it's a shiny object on the one hand. It's a great citizen experience, consumer experience when I visit big cities and small. London, Amsterdam, Dumbo, and New York, Midtown Palo Alto, Downtown Palo Alto, Redwood City, Burlingame, all have parklets. And in my personal experience, it's fantastic. But that doesn't stack up if your business is shuttered because it's impacting you. So I, I, I wonder if you can provide some of the big picture perspective as well as some of the, the experiences that have come forth if you guys, as you guys have done this research.
We have not done specific economic research like that, but we are aware of more of the, the performance standards or those indicators of, in these other cities that you've, you've mentioned. I'm not aware of businesses closing or, or really suffering because of parklets or because a parklet was causing so much trouble to, to a particular block that it had to be removed. I have seen them be adjusted. I've also seen them privatized. So we just wanna make a note, this one's public. And some of the ones that you've heard mentioned are probably being paid for more by the businesses over time through license agreements, more as an extension of their business. So that's a, that's different. That's a, that's kind of the sidewalk cafe pop out. And I think a lot of people are familiar with that. And we wouldn't want you to equate that with this proposal because this was designed to be open. It's why alcohol sales couldn't happen here. Alcohol service can't happen here. ABC licenses require, as Scott said, some kind of a perimeter fence. So I, that's kind of a qualitative answer. I, I've seen a lot of these in, obviously, Redwood City, but also San Carlos has been experimenting with expanding their sidewalks as well through, through these kinds of tools. We can, we can go and dig up some more research on this as we move forward to city council, if you're interested in pursuing this. I'm not sure that, what kind of an economic study we would really benefit us so much as though the, the experience of these business owners, we really want to get their feedback if, if this gets implemented as to how it's really working for them.
I, I think that's helpful. A cursory search pops up a lot of interesting articles conducted by planning nerds. But I, but I do think it's worth it, if this proceeds, that we really take this seriously. And, and, and more importantly, I mean, look, three immediate neighbors to the project are really concerned about this impacting their business in a negative way, including one who I go to 6:30 in the morning almost every weekend with my daughter to get a donut. So I am like a big fan of your crumb donut. And I don't wanna see that go away, right? So I'm like the most passionate person about protecting that. But I wanna make sure that, that, you know, we've gotta do some experimentation. We've spent, I've spent the last five years on this commission talking about, let's do something interesting, right? I wanna hit the point that, that Janice made about, hey, maybe we should block this area off with, you know, orange tape and let people see it. I know it's, it's hyperbole. The city of Palo Alto did that. In Midtown Palo Alto, they racked up $2 million improving the sidewalks, doing a hard experiment where they extended the sidewalks. They put this awesome, this, well, this awesome concept in place. They executed it terribly. They did expand the sidewalks, but the experiment was a horrible failure because four businesses failed. Because it took years for them to put it into place, right? They shut down the streets. There was no experimentation. This was the most heavy-handed, and I worked one block away from there for, for that whole time. This is probably the worst project I've ever seen. This is the opposite of that. The one thing I would really recommend is, I'd like, if we do move forward with this, I'd like to see a quarterly check-in with the businesses. And let's condition it that way so that if this is really causing a negative impact, we, we gotta like quickly address this. Because this is a public space, but we don't want one person's largely personal benefit to impact his neighbors in a negative way. So that, that's something that I think we should, we should consider. I got a couple of other points I need to organize. So I'll move over to Sarah for now.
Thank you. Sarah?
Okay, I have a few things. I definitely was, have been, was very concerned about the bike parking that should be, that should not be there. Regardless of whether there's bike parking or nothing there or striping, I think that there's going to be an issue for cars that are traveling south when there is a car parked, which there probably will be in that existing, the space that's staying just to the north of the parklet, that if there's a longer car or truck in that spot, somebody's gonna assume that the spot beyond it is open and they're gonna pull in. And so there has to be some solution to indicate to people that it's not a parking space, even when you have a really long car parked or truck parked in that space. Because I could see somebody kind of pulling in and, and maybe doing it a little too quickly. And you're then right into, well, first of all, you wouldn't wanna have bikes parked there. And especially because like, if you're like me, I, half the time I drop half the stuff I'm trying to, you know, hold while I'm trying to lock up my bike. But, you know, so I just know that for sure shouldn't be there. But I'm a little concerned about the logistics, about how that'll actually function with cars that are looking for parking. I am, do feel that it, part of the purpose of this is to be able to move, give, give this, you know, space for seating and to the public. And there should be some kind of trade-off in terms of not having the, as much constraint, or as many constraints on the sidewalk. And so the, the tables and chairs on the sidewalk have stayed. And that, to me, you're missing out on the, some of the benefit of this, which is to, and I really, really think that that will then give people the indication that it is a, it is a part of the cafe. You're giving people that impression when the tables are kind of fronting it. So I think that's really important. I, the many years I worked for an agency whose primary directive was to provide public access, I could see that in the best of intentions, things got privatized in subtle ways. Signage is great. And I see that there's like the requirement for the two signs. But there's so many other ways that things get privatized. And that is a key way that I see that it will get potentially privatized. I am, I really am, I, I don't think it's fair to say that in a year, the businesses wouldn't be affected. Like I, I, I think, and I'm worried about, I liked in part the idea of a quarterly check-in. In a certain respect, that places the burden In a certain respect, that places the burden upon the businesses to show an effect, which is a little bit of a, I don't know how that flies frankly. I'm very worried about a business like the donut place because frankly, you're not going in there, it doesn't have seating inside and so you're going in there for a few minutes to get your donuts. And so I wonder if you're going to have the parking to the north, it should maybe be switched to five, 10 minute or, you know, or whatever, like short parking to really facilitate continued, you know, access to, because the other, I see that, it sounds like to me that the other businesses would benefit from having people linger longer. I'm not sure that's true about the donut shop. And so I think, I see that there might be a specific, like intense impact. And so I'm thinking about the parking spaces on the other side of the parking, parklet that should now be switched, I would say, you know, think about switching those to a very short parking limit, time limit to, because the other, the point of the parklet is to kind of get people to attract them and stay and linger and certainly if they're going to be coming there to linger, they could park further away, you know? But, and so you want to encourage, if you want to encourage that kind of lingering, then have them park further away and walk. But I just see that that's a bit of an unfair impact to me. I think that I am, really do want to see, I think it's very important that this is just a trial and that, I appreciated the points about wanting to know that it can be pulled out quickly. Because I think that, I think that's very important because it should be like evaluated. It isn't quite clear to me either about the, I heard the comment about the criteria used to identify like whether this is being successful and et cetera. I'm not suggesting that I know what the criteria should be, but if I were not, if I were skeptical of it, I, you know, which I have some concerns clearly, I would also be worried about that. And what are the criteria that are going to be used? And then part of the reason why I brought up the point earlier about the overall planning, town center planning and this project in the context of that is that I was wondering about, well, what if everybody, like you said, everybody wants a parklet? And so there's kind of that favoritism question. I will say that in other areas where I've seen these, you know, what I've seen that kind of look like similar projects, the parklets are more, there's more of a concentration of cafes or restaurant businesses around the parklet, so it's a little bit, they're more conducive to the kind of what the parklet's providing to a certain extent, it seems like to me. So I can see why this one is a challenge. I'm not saying that I'm not in favor of taking this risk and trying it, but I do think that there, I'm a little worried about some of the particulars.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you for letting me catch my breath and you've, Sarah, very, in a well-spoken manner, addressed the same concerns that I was going to raise up. So the, I think it would be helpful to consider putting in more short-term parking to facilitate the donut business. I think there is a loading zone a little further north that's within walking distance, but we just need to make sure that there's enough short-term parking to support these businesses so they can, you know, do what they need to do. I agree with the moving the bike parking, it just doesn't seem, I'm not sure it's really been thought through in a careful way. I would get Maz, so the city engineer's, feedback on how do you address that sightline around the edge? Maybe putting a planter in, a big plant pot or something, not, you know, you want to be cautious about whatever this image is we got from Carmel, whatever the town is, Pacific Grove. We don't want to create this monstrosity, but, you know, putting something, some kind of structure, like a plant structure, might help visually if it's a tall tree or something, a potted plant, might help on that, on that side of things. So, you know, going back to Brian's point about when people complain about there's an existing hazard there, I think Main Street is a designated bike path in our current circulation plan. There is no striping for bikes on it. We allow, I'm going to touch the third rail here, we allow trucks that are super long to park on there, so it's dangerous to bike down the street. I mean, it would be great to see some striping all the way down Main Street, but maybe on this particular park that says this is a bike path on this side of the road, right? That's, that may be one way to help address the bigger issue, which has nothing to do with this specific project, but it's a valid concern about biking. Those are my comments on this.
Thank you. I had a few, oh, yes, Steve.
Thanks. I wanted to, I wanted to add my thanks to everybody who showed up to comment tonight. Obviously there's differences of opinion, but what, what these hearings are all about is giving everybody a chance to make that heard. And if you have concerns about public safety and the impact of proposals on your businesses and parking, this is exactly the place to make those. I, my feeling about parking is that part of our problem here is the psychology of those of us who live in Half Moon Bay. I drive to businesses on this block probably most weekdays and I know myself that if I fail to find a parking place in the block and I have to go around the corner or to the next block, it makes me a little bit angry and depressed for a moment. And then, and then I slap myself. On Sunday, I was driving downtown to this very block, in fact, with a friend of mine who lives in Sunnyvale. And I apologized to him that we had to go to the next block. And he said, well, you should come with me sometime and try to find a place to park on the weekend in downtown Sunnyvale, it's parking Armageddon. So, so I think, I think that we are spoiled and we have to, we have to free ourselves a little bit from that psychology. I think if we're successful in the next few years at some of our initiatives, like attracting more residential development to downtown, if we're successful at filling up some of these vacancies downtown that we were talking about at the first part of this meeting, there's going to be additional pressures on, on parking until and unless maybe this parking structure happens, but, but that's not in the near term, obviously. So there's going to be continuing pressures on parking and we're gonna, I'm afraid, as a community, have to be a little more flexible with that. I, I do, I do like this project, I do appreciate many of the benefits that it promises, the ADA accessibility downtown, the increased, staff has written, the increased opportunity for dining and recreation and the kind of sidewalk society that is, is a big trend in more urban areas. Obviously this isn't the first parklet to be proposed in California, they, there have been some that have worked well. So I am supportive of that, I'm sensitive to the, to some of the issues. I think we should look hard at whether some of the remaining parking in that block should be shorter term for folks who do want to go very quickly in and out of some of those businesses. I hear the, I hear the concerns about the chairs and little tables remaining on the sidewalk, but in my mind, this, we lose a lot of the benefit of doing this if all of a sudden we're not allowing the existing seating on the sidewalk to continue. I'm, I'm not sure it would make sense for the business owner to invest in it if he's going to lose the, the existing tables and chairs on the sidewalk. So even though there is a little bit of inconvenience with that thing, I think that's pretty integral to the experience that Cafe Society's been delivering. And I would, I would, at this point, not be in favor of requiring those to be removed. So I do, I do think this has the, the promise of benefiting all the businesses on that block with increased traffic and visitor time spent there. I'm also in favor of monitoring it closely with, with regular check-ins and understanding what the criteria is for declaring success here. I know that still needs to be worked out, but we should, we should do that.
Thank you. Just a few thoughts of my own. First, thank you for your remarks and thank you to the public, both perspectives have been really helpful. And I appreciate the respect that you've shown for people who bring a different perspective to the decision than you do. That is one of the great hallmarks of the downtown community and I thank you and respect you for it. I think the, the greatest challenge from my listening to the public hearing is a perception of this is a zero-sum game, that if this produces something that the applicant wins, that everyone else loses. And that's a, that's a thesis, it could be true, it might not be true. I'm envisioning what it meant, what it might have been like if this had been moved a few, a few parking spaces over in one direction or another. You know, if that were the case, would Harpo be excited about the project? Would he see the benefits of a project if it was three or four doors down? And so there's a golden rule principle here that strikes me as important and worthy of thinking about. I'm not here to call a change in location of the project, but I think as a way of thinking about whether the, whether this is a zero-sum game or whether there's really a broader benefit, it makes sense to ask that question of the applicant and of each of us as individual stakeholders in the project. With respect to the visibility question of a long truck, that's another way, you know, if this thing were actually at a corner where there was no parking space for a long truck next to it, maybe it would be more visible. The trade-off, of course, would be that it would be subjected to traffic coming around the corner.
You've touched the third rail now too, you're in trouble.
Yeah, I, I do it all the time. With respect to the total parking inventory, I think Brian's comment was on the, on the money. I acknowledge that three parking spaces in this area in this block is, I don't know what percentage that is of the parking on that side of the street, I'm going to take a shot and say 10%, maybe it's more or less, I'm not sure. It's not zero, I get it. But, you know, we just spent an hour and a half or so talking about the difficulties of maintaining successful businesses and the status quo arrangements. And so I do think it makes sense to try to find ways to experiment and find, find out things that work and that don't work. And, you know, even if it works badly and we pull it out after a month or, you know, to me, the fact that we've been willing to try something different says something, it says something good. There was some questions about what would be measured and I think, you know, each business, of course, needs a certain amount of time and granularity to understand whether there's been a business impact as measured by traffic. But from a public perspective, clearly, you know, safety, nuisance, the occupancy of the park, there are, I think that it is true that you, if you don't declare what you're measuring before you engage in an experiment, then your experiment has no value because you can cherry pick the measures that you want to define what success means. So I think we, if we do this, we need to start with definitions of what we want to measure. And I offered a couple, occupancy, public safety, the potential for drawing additional traffic in the street, foot traffic in the area. And obviously, you know, the impact on the nearby businesses seems worthwhile to me. With respect to the question of the tables and chairs on the sidewalks, again, you know, I think that where the thing is located, where the, if we were going to have a parklet on this block, would, you know, if it's been located to manage the interaction between trees and existing tables, one of the possibilities that might be thought through is, is there a location that might have been more optimal if the tables weren't there? And I don't know the answer to that, but it's probably worth thinking about. That's a level of detail that I'm not sure we should be chasing in a, in a public hearing. But I think Sarah raised some really good points about the potential subtlety of ways that the perception of this public space becoming the perception as private space cannot be emphasized enough. If we're going to do this and it comes out to be perceived as a Cafe Society space, it has failed. And so we need to really focus on the extent to which people who go to the donut shop or who are visiting other shops feel comfortable as opposed to just, are there people in it? That said, oh, and garbage. When I looked at the pictures, I didn't see any garbage cans. In a small parklet, a garbage can is significant real estate. If there's adjacent garbage cans close enough by, that would be nice, but I think that the wind blowing issues and the potential for garbage is a big deal. And I would, I think that will improve the quality of the experience of people using it if it's, if it's well policed for garbage. I think it's worth performing the experiment and I think if it doesn't work, we should declare failure and move on rather than, you know, let's take the time to think through what the experiment needs to be. If we need to deal with the need for short-term parking, I understand that that's beyond our purview tonight and beyond the staff's purview, I would recommend, I'd support a recommendation if, I forget I'm a chair now. So if there's a motion that talks about changing to create additional parking spaces that are short, you know, for short duration, just a few minutes to go in and out, I would be supportive of that. I don't think I have any other comments. Colleagues, other comments or if not a motion? Rick?
I just had one more before it goes to council. To Sarah's point, the design of this project seems to have an open architecture. If you look at the way the trees occupy the space now, I think there's some ways to modern, like shift this one way or the other, maybe further south a little bit, one parking spot that might make this become more of an open space because of the way the street lines and the way the trees align. So I know Chris is good at thinking through these problems. I would encourage you, if this does go to council, that you consider some alternative designs that make this feel like more of a public space as opposed to something that belongs to an individual business.
Thank you. I hope that it, that it's clear that we have really tried to incorporate your thinking and we've been listening to you because we think you've brought some really good points to the conversation and we're grateful for it. Steve?
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and adopt the resolution as presented here by staff.
Mr. Chair, would that include the, because there are certain changes we discussed, like for instance, not having the bike? Perhaps staff could summarize what they've heard?
Yes, I'd be happy to summarize the, the changes that I heard. For one, additional visibility striping along the perimeter of the parklet. Add signage where the new bike rack is shown, indicating no parking. Provide more information on places for vehicles to park, more signs in some form. There's a conflict, I heard tables and chair, the existing tables and chairs on the sidewalk should be removed. I heard some commissioners mentioning that they would like them to stay, so that's a little bit of a question mark with that one. More economic analysis research conducted on other parklets, there was mention of story poles, quarterly check-in with businesses, more short-term vehicle parking within the vicinity of the parklet. vehicle parking within the vicinity of the parklet, remove bike rack, consider shifting the parklet to the south as a potential option. That's all I have on my list.
So I think I'll, I'll amend my motion to specifically reference the relocation of the bike parking and that staff, as they consider the design, look for opportunities to, to either shift the location or to, to make the site more public, more public space, and then look for opportunities and the need to provide more short-term parking to the north of the parklet site in addition to the safety striping and other things that I would expect our city engineer would want as well.
What about the quarterly check-in?
Oh, absolutely.
The motion does not yet have a second.
Staff, do you have thoughts on that?
This is matching my list. I think if, if you were comfortable with this, it would help staff to have a condition of approval. Not, not that we don't already, but to note that there's, there's a standard condition of approval, number two, in almost all of your documents that allows minor changes, if they're minor in nature, that staff has discretion to make adjustments. In this case, because it's a pilot project and there's so many variables that we've been talking about, we'd like you to make it really overt that the city engineer and I could continue to work sort of in a more hands-on approach to making adjustments as we go.
So most of those items that I just mentioned would follow, fall within the purview of that staff discretion, including the placement of tables and some of those types of things? Does that, does that make sense to you, Sarah?
I need a second.
Well, maybe point of order, but I'm, is it kosher to discuss what exactly we mean by some of these directions?
Of course, it's always in order to clarify the motion.
So, so Brian, I wasn't clear at the end of your statement when you're talking about the tables and chairs, whether we intend to give staff the flexibility to...
That's my intention, that it follows with, in the condition of approval, that gives staff's direction or discretion to, to consider those types of items under the final design.
And, and similarly, it seems a little bit vague to, to talk about giving direction to shift the location of the, of the whole thing? Is, is that really realistic?
Looking at staff and I'm assuming it's, you know, when we're talking about a parking space south or, you know, something along those lines.
I guess my, my thing would be, let, let's, let's allow a little latitude in new ideas that could potentially include shifting it a little way, doing some things that incorporate the feedback that have been heard tonight. But I wouldn't, again, I don't want to litigate or specify exactly how this is going to be designed from this podium.
Right. So a parking space to the south or so might follow within that minor change sort of purview, but moving it across the street would not?
Thank you for that. That clarifies it for me.
And, and just in terms of the tables and chairs that are on the sidewalk, I mean, there are tables and chairs that could be tested out for a while there and then you could remove them. And, and I mean, that's part of doing a test, a pilot, is that I, I would assume it'd be nice to give staff the flexibility to do that because while I have that concern, it may not happen, so.
So this motion is at risk of failing for lack of a second?
I second it.
Thank you. Are there any, is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to respectfully abstain because I spoke about the project beforehand. I, I just respectfully, I shouldn't have made that comment in advance.
Yes. Four, zero, one abstention, the motion passes with the changes that were proposed. Thank you very much for the public input. We appreciate it.
Yeah, we'd like to keep moving. If you, if you could please, we, excuse me, folks, we have a continuing amount of business to have, so welcome to continue speaking, but you need to step outside or stick around and let us continue our business, please. Okay. So that concludes our public hearing items. The next item on our agenda is the director's report. Thank you, Jill.
So Happy New Year, and just a quick agenda forecast for you. On January 28th, we are planning to bring a report out about the short-term rental survey. There was an online survey that had very good response. Commission had had a study session on policy points around short-term rentals some time ago now, and we're finally able to come, come round to it, and we really wanted kind of to blanket an approach to getting some input, and we did, so we will share that with you. We may have some other zoning topics for you that evening. We didn't get any projects noticed. We've had some staff sicknesses and we just couldn't, couldn't quite meet noticing deadlines, so you're going to see us focused on, on zoning for that meeting. February, you will see the Housing Element Annual Report. This is something that has kind of developed more and more over time as housing law has required more reporting points, and so we'll take advantage of that meeting to relate it to some of the things that you've been working on in terms of policy. City Council next week, January 21st, they will have a first reading of the ADU ordinance, that's the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. They're also going to consider contracts for environmental review for the Poplar Gateways project. Should they approve those, then that, that sets it in motion to come into your forum for review of environmental, the actual environmental impact report. Architectural Advisory Committee met last month and gave us great input on that Manning-Kelly preliminary application, as well as a single-family home proposed for a significantly substandard lot on Myrtle. This week, they will, they're meeting on the 16th, on Thursday, and they're going to be looking at a single-family home with an accessory dwelling unit. We wouldn't normally take something like this to them, but it's in two visual resource areas being on Kelly, across the street from Hatch, visible from Highway One, and there's just a number of things we want to make sure that they, they give us some feedback about. They've been incredibly constructive and we're really enjoying working with them.
Where's that project? Which project?
It's at 493 Kelly, so it's on the north side of Kelly. I've been sending you a few things for Planning Commission training. February 1st is a Saturday, there's a training at Sonoma State. I am going to go to that if you want to coordinate with me about that. We can take that offline. I don't, we don't need to do that now, but more significantly, the League of California Cities Planning Commission Academy will be in March. It's in Sacramento. I've sent that to you a couple times. They sell out. They sold out on us last year, so if you want to do that, we'd encourage you to jump into it before the end of the week. So, so do let us know. You can contact, you have our new assistant's email through, through email I've sent to you. Contact Tara Hatcher directly and she'll work with you on that. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Questions on the report?
Just a comment. It's, I'm not going to be here on the 28th, so we should make sure we have quorum of January, and I am not dialing in because I'm going to be in Amsterdam.
Just as well, I think.
Just as well.
I'll be asleep, and then I, I had a communication thing.
Brian? So do we have any anticipation for when the LCP reappears on our agenda yet?
We are trying to get that to you first quarter 2020. We've been working really hard on it. I spent a lot of the break on that, and some of us, again, have been not feeling well, so we're, we're, we're going to power up and get that to you. Give us a couple more weeks and we'll give you a better, a better schedule on it. We have continued to have constructive dialogue with Coastal Commission staff, so we have really clear direction about how to make some adjustments that are responsive to their direction, but also maintain the course that we've been on for so long, so.
Okay, we're looking forward to it. Anything else? Planning Commissioner Communications?
As you were talking about CUNY, I've been meaning to mention this for a while. When the improvements to CUNY were originally proposed, we had a, some challenges with the school district on the trees, and I just want to call out, in the last few months, all those new trees have been planted. It's exceeded any expectation I had around what they would do, and it was very different from what I would have expected, but it, it far exceeded the burden we placed on the school district, and I'm pleased that they took care of it.
That's great. Thank you. Anything else? Steve?
One, one item that I wanted to be transparent about, I, I've been the Planning Commission representative on the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and I missed the January 9th meeting due to personal travel out of the country, and I'm attending the League of Cities training first week of March, so I'm going to miss that meeting, which I feel badly about, but unless they change the date of the meeting or somebody else wants to be the Planning Commission representative on it, that's, that's the way it will be.
Maybe we should have an alternate forum if it's, I don't know. We can be ad hoc about that, I think. It doesn't have to be too formal, right?
Let me see what's on their agenda. I'm not, I'm not sure what, what they have coming up also, so we'll, we'll take a look at that and we'll come back to you about how we can manage a, a backup. Thanks.
Okay. Any other Planning Commission communications? If not, could I have a motion to adjourn?
I motion we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Done.